Good morning, I'd like to call this work session of the Southampton Town Board to order on this 25th day of October of 2018. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Supervisor Schneiderman.
Here.
Councilwoman LaStad.
Here.
Councilwoman Scholera.
Here.
Councilwoman Bouvier.
Here.
Councilwoman Skivell.
Present.
I tried to stall as long as I could.
It's okay.
All right, so our first item is a follow-up discussion on amendments to the accessory apartment provision in the town code, Chapter 330 and 270. We're joined by Kara Back from our town attorney's office, Diana Weir, our Director of Housing and Community Development, and Kyle Collins. Are you here for this conversation? Might as well join us. Our land planning and development administrator.
Nice.
Got it? Only took me three years. All right, so what we've been endeavoring to do is to modify the current accessory apartment law within the town. Right now, the law says if you have a lot that's over 3/4 of an acre or larger, you can put in an accessory apartment as a right. There are no restrictions in terms of who goes there. Well, there are some. It's supposed to be somebody living and working in the town, but there's no income restrictions. But you have to have a large enough lot. We've tried a bunch of different approaches to this issue, trying to create more inventory for our workforce. I think we all understand that, for the most part, our workforce has been priced out of the housing market because of a lack of availability of affordably-priced rentals. And the current law, although I think 12,000 lots are eligible, some 400 have taken advantage of it and put in legal accessory apartments, but without any, in terms of restrictions. So they could be summer rentals, et cetera. So we've looked at this a couple of different ways, trying to figure out how, particularly in the areas that have the, are least affordable, we could start creating an inventory and reduce some of the traffic and the travel times and create more of a sense of community. So, you know, we've been listening to everything that the board has been saying about increases in density or fair housing issues, and we've been trying different approaches. And came, working with the attorneys, came up with a new approach that I think resolves all of the issues. Actually leads to a lowering of density overall. It does create some options for housing potentially in the areas that are least affordable or the least dense areas. So I'll let, I'll give it, I guess, to Kara if you want to take it from there.
Yeah, just wait, lowering of density where?
So overall townwide, this program would lower density by 1,000 units overall, in terms of the availability of units that could create accessory apartments. And then we are going to talk about tying it into affordable housing, sanitary credits as well, so it'll, in the areas that it doesn't lower density, it will not increase density beyond what zoning had allowed.
What we talked about with the TDRs?
Yes. Okay, so Kara?
Okay. So the, gone back to the drawing board a little bit, and our major change here was having a density restriction. So an accessory apartment will only be allowed in those areas where the density is less than 500 people per square mile. So we base that on the census-designated place data that we got from the United States Census Bureau.
Of 2010?
2010, yes. Eligible areas would include Bridgehampton, Eastport, Flanders, North Sea, North Hampton, Neuyak, Tuckahoe, Watermill, and West Hampton. The density requirement will potentially cause a reduction in approximately 2,868 accessory apartments in the ineligible areas of East Quogue, Hampton Bays, Quiag, Remsenburg, Spionk, Riverside, and Chinnacock Hills.
Right, so the, so it adds 1,900 in areas that are less dense, and it subtracts 2,868 in areas that are more dense.
Correct.
And we're just going to check those numbers of the added based on the CDP tracks not lining up with the Hamlet?
Yes, yes. So some of our numbers are based upon Hamlets, and we did notice that some of our data was the CDP from the Census Bureau, and some are from a Hamlet. So we just have to check them.
Right, so you're right. They might not be off by much. We could structure it either way. IT said they could give me the numbers based on our Hamlet boundaries rather than a census tract. They do have that.
Good, okay.
So...
So, and that, that is an issue, you know, how you formulate that 500 per square mile.
In some areas it's...
How you adjust that square mile, that, that's critical, I think. My other question was the, the ones that are eliminated, that don't fall into this, they're, we consider them grandfathered in?
Well, those apartments, yes.
People that already have those apartments that currently exist for a period of time, or how long does that actually work? Because they're going to have to, by the rental renewal, the permit renewal, or how does that?
Yeah, so they would be, if, if you have and currently have an accessory apartment in an ineligible area, they would be grandfathered in. So they would still be required to obtain rental permits going forward, but they would be grandfathered in as far as, you know, being, having the ability to have it.
So it wouldn't be restricted in time? It would...
No, no, it wouldn't be restricted in rent either. They could rent whatever, for whatever they wanted to.
And what about the people that had it now, that were eligible, that become ineligible after? I'm assuming it's grandfathered in. Do they still have, but it came into effect when it was affordable, they had to do affordable, so they have to do affordable in perpetuity?
So the affordable rent would not apply to them?
So I have, I have eligible now, because there's less than 500 people, because some of these are tight, let's take East Quogue, and it goes to over...
And you have over 3/4 of an acre, right, so...
What are you talking about? No, I'm, on to your thing, I have half an acre, I'm giving you a second.
Oh, okay.
So it goes over, I'm in East Quogue, it goes over to ineligible.
Mm-hmm.
I no longer, do I still have to keep it affordable in perpetuity since I got that grant when it was required that I be affordable?
I don't understand.
Yeah, you mean, you need to have...
Yes, I got it.
Do you understand?
Yes, I understand. So in other words, you built the apartment under the new code, which says half an acre. You get the census information next time, and now East Quogue is not eligible. Does that stay? Yes, it would have to stay. And it would have to stay affordable, absolutely.
That's the question, okay.
You got the benefit when it happened, it's going to stay, and the benefit is because you're making it affordable.
But if you get that density number of 500 people per square mile, then it would stop future ones in that area.
So, here's my question.
You had a vested right.
Is this only for those parcels that are less than 30,000 square feet?
No, this would be...
So if, if, so right now, I think the object, the objective here, right, is to increase affordability opportunities in the town.
Yes.
But we are, in fact, going to lose approximately 1,000 opportunities, so I don't see how that meets the objective of trying to increase the affordability. Because if I have 30,000 square feet now in one of these communities that's not eligible, I could put in an accessory apartment. But now, under this new law, I will no longer be able to do that. We're actually losing...
I suppose you could get a variance for that.
Losing, losing, I don't, I think it doesn't meet the objective of what the legislation is trying to forward. We're actually losing opportunities through this law.
I disagree.
You're not necessarily losing density. You're losing...
But it, it, it says, the facts here are, you got 2,868 units that are being lost, and you're only generating 953.
Right, but those...
So those are 1,000 potential units that could happen today.
But not affordable. You're creating...
I, I understand, but the, the issue is, we need rental units, right?
So you now, yeah, but Kyle, I think you're, you're missing something. So, so right now, there's 12,000 units that are eligible, something like that, to do apartments. You're, you're, you're losing 1,000 of them. So you're going to go from 12,000 to 11,000, but all 11,000 potentials would be affordable. Right now, of the 12,000, none of them would have to be affordable, zero. So you're getting 11, a possibility of 11,000, not going to happen, but you're getting the possibility of 11,000 affordable. So you are meeting the objective.
Wait a minute, I'm confused. If there's 30,000 right now, we're saying they're all grandfathered in, once this...
Not 30,000, what'd you say?
No, 30,000 square feet. You're saying those are grandfathered in, and they can charge whatever they want. Anybody, though, that's 30,000 square feet after this passes, should it pass?
You can't...
Do they, they have to be affordable?
I don't understand why you would, you would want to take out potential housing stock opportunities, which this would do. You could say, if you still have 30,000 square feet, you should still be able to put an accessory apartment in, whether you're in this thing or not. We need to increase the supply of housing stock. If you don't do that, whether it's affordable or not, you, because these, this is still for year-round residents, right? We have conditions for this. So if somebody in Remsenburg has a 30,000 square foot, has an opportunity today to create an accessory apartment, as you increase the supply, the rents will reflect that. But, because I, I would say, in Remsenburg, which I am a resident in Remsenburg, we don't have any...
Okay, so look, we can go back to this issue. This program is on proposing, it actually lowers the density.
Mm-hmm.
It's a density-reducing, but it does increase the affordability, I think significantly. So it's, it meets the objective. If you want to go and say, okay, we don't want it to reduce by 1,000 availability of units under what's current, then you say, okay, we're going to allow that 1,000 back somehow, you know?
Well, I think what you did originally was you wanted to just go down to the, a lower, without taking out this issue. If you want to do that...
Maybe you haven't been following this debate, but there's been a lot of different changes to it.
No, I have been, I have been. But if you want to just apply this to the lots that you're adding, right? Between 20,000 and 30,000...
The original 5,000.
Then you're basically saying, only those lots that are between half an acre and 3/4 acre have to be affordable. And if you, if you're lucky enough to have more than 3/4 of an acre, it can be a summer rental. So you're basically having two classes of properties.
No, you can't be a summer rental. You absolutely cannot. Our existing accessory apartment law does not allow you to do summer rentals. They have to be year-round residents. They absolutely cannot be summer rentals. I think you're decreasing the potential supply. So if you want to account for this, and those are affordable, but if you take out those lots that are greater than 30,000 square feet, you're decreasing the amount of potential housing supply in this town. You just are.
And if you want to keep the density neutral...
But if you want to apply this just to the lots between 20 and 30,000 square feet, that's fine, but I think you are...
So you want to basically take the lots that are above 3/4 of an acre in the ineligible areas and leave them in?
From half to...
That's right.
And leave them in?
Leave it the way the code is now.
So that's the 2,600?
We'll keep the affordable component there?
But do you add the affordable component to it?
I think you have to, for fair housing purposes.
If you, if you wanted to do that, that's fine.
So basically, all, but we wouldn't make those ineligible then?
Right. Your best if you're 30,000 square feet, 30,000 and above, you...
Then you do have the potential that...
You'd be grandfathered in.
You vest, yeah.
You're grandfathered for that opportunity.
But you have to be...
But if we're tying it to the availability, if we tie it to the availability of credits from open space purchases, then we're still limiting it, so we're not adding more density than the code would have allowed.
Absolutely.
That's what, that's the, that's the density limit, or that's what makes it neutral.
I could live with that.
You'd have to say that again now.
So any, any lots that are 30,000 and over today, that have the eligibility today to build an apartment...
They would stay eligible.
Will maintain that right.
They're grandfathering apartments to it.
We would grandfather them for, but it would have to still...
Regardless of density.
But it would still have to be affordable.
Yes, still meet the, the rent requirement.
So we're going to...
But we're going to extinguish...
A credit.
A credit.
I mean, a...
Whatever the conversion, whatever the conversion is.
Right.
The equivalent sanitary flow...
Correct.
Credit percentage will be wiped out.
For all, or just for the 30,000?
For all. Anyone in this new pro, any, any, every apartment that gets created under this program, because they're affordable.
Yeah, that's fine.
And we haven't been doing that for all the accessory apartments that have been created so far. We haven't been taking, but they haven't been affordable. And these rights were supposed to be used to generate affordable housing. And that could be a way to limit potential...
Okay, so that's the first change you want. So that, those people with those large-size lots are not going to be required to meet the density.
So does 2,8868 are back in?
They don't have to be...
And you have to do the TDRs, yes.
The TDRs, but not the density that allows them to...
They've got to be grandfathered for the right...
They're going to be grandfathered in for their size.
Lot size, not density.
Okay. They're going to be...
So the only place we're basically allowing accessory apartments on less than 3/4 of an acre are in these lower-dense areas.
Yeah.
And we're going to allow down to half an acre in those areas. And that's going to make eligible an additional 1,953.
So they must be affordable...
They've got to check those numbers.
Yeah, we'll check those numbers.
That, you're meeting your objectives, so now you're expanding the opportunities to the 1,953.
But addressing the density issue.
Yeah.
And we're limiting the...
I have to narrate on this.
No, I think it's a good change, because you're, you're still allowing people, you don't mind if it's in a large lot, that's what we have now.
Yeah, exactly.
So to take that away from people and say, because you're in a dense area, even though you have an acre, and you could do it quite easily, is kind of like punishing those people.
So if somebody today, somebody today had the ability to create an accessory apartment...
Now you're taking that away.
They still will be able to. I'm not taking...
They still will be able to. Now it'll have to be affordable, and we'll be extinguishing an appropriate amount of sewage, so that makes sense.
If you have a lot less than 20,000 square feet, it has to be in one of the less dense areas.
Less than 30,000.
Less than 20,000 and 30,000.
So now, tell me, tell me, John, you had a question about the...
I do, I had a question about the affordability, which, you know, I certainly support, but the, the numbers as calculated here, they seem low to me for a potential landlord to construct, maintain, you know, and rent out various apartments, along with a possible change in their assessments and what they'd have to pay. The numbers that we have, I think, need to be worked on a little bit.
So maybe Diana could take us through the how these numbers... So if you go on Kara's memo, you see the studio maximum rental is 1328, one-bedroom 1518, and two-bedroom is 1708. So how were those numbers calculated?
So what happens is, we were targeting people at less than the homeownership percentages. So people that are qualifying for a home, we looked at people making 80% or more, you know, between 80 and 120, or people at 120 or less. 80 less or less, or 120 or less.
So, let me just...
Than the AMI.
Let me simplify that.
So for the rentals, we would go in lower.
So just, I'm just trying to simplify that. So area median income is a published chart in Nassau Suffolk County. So we're basically saying...
To set the rates.
Diana, so...
Yes, sorry.
So we're taking area median, and we're saying that somebody renting is sort of in a different category than somebody who's owning a house, right?
Right, so we have to give an opportunity to people at a little bit lesser income, because if they were at 80 or 120, they could qualify for a home. They may not qualify because of the credit, but...
So these, these numbers that you see...
130?
100, this is to set the amount, not who qualifies for it. We're setting a rent based on incomes. However, to qualify, then that's the 130 that you're saying for a home?
Okay.
All right, so just to explain, so if, let's say you're one person, and you're going to rent a studio, the average one person, the median income is 81,700. So these numbers are based on taking 65% of it, which is 53105, and then assuming that somebody could pay 30% of that for rent. So you take 30% of it, so you multiply it by .30, and then you divide it by 12 for 12 months a year, and you will arrive at that number of 1328. The next figure for one-bedroom is based on two people. So the, the median income is 83,400. And then the next one is based on three people, 105, 100, what, at, at 65% of that number. So that is typically what we do, like at Sandy Hollow, Spionk. Of course, there are federal housing credits tied to that, too. So the landlord who's collecting that rent has other additional monies coming in to offset it. So Tommy John, I'm going to kick it back to you, because...
Sure. My concern was that, that these numbers for the landlord would be a little low, and it wouldn't incentivize, incentivize people to build a one-bedroom apartment onto their home or on their property at 1,500 a month. So putting that kind of cap on, I, I just wanted us to tweak the numbers a little bit. And perhaps instead of using 65% of the AMI, I think we should go up to 75%. And...
Do you have the numbers, what the rents would be at 75%?
I do, I do. So I would propose that for a studio, using 75% of the AMI, with a max amount of $1,532, which is, you know, $100 more a month.
Was that 1,532?
Correct. For a one-bedroom, 1,751. And for the two-bedroom, 1,971. So essentially bumping each one up $100. And that would help offset the increase in the assessment of the property if someone were to, you know, put a, an accessory apartment on this.
Are those numbers, does that include utilities?
Not at this point.
No, our calculation did not figure in the...
So a landlord could then, could, could add utilities on top of that, or no?
Yes.
Yes, well, it depends on how it's structured. You could structure it that there's a housing allowance that, that the state provides, and you could say that, you know, you can include a housing allowance.
How do you address the person's eligibility? I mean, right now, anybody can do that, do this?
Yeah, there is no income limitation.
So somebody can make...
They have to make under a...
It's based on a rent that would be affordable to somebody making 75%.
But there's no income limitation on it?
Not in this...
Well, see, and that, that, I mean, I understand, Councilwoman give on his incentive, to incentivize a homeowner to do that, but by the same token, will it disincentivize people of a certain income range? That would be my one concern about that. I mean, $100 is significant to some families, and particularly in the income levels that we're talking about. So, I have to give that some thought.
So, all right, so it does make the rents a little more expensive. So you potentially could price some people, possibly.
And the landlords could charge lower rents if they were, in fact, not filling the apartments, and the market would take over. I'm just...
Yeah, so I mean, on one hand, I look at this and I go, okay, somebody who's making the average salary here is still priced out of the housing market. We have to, you know, try to create, you know, at least some inventory for the average person. You have to make so much more than average salary just to live in the community, so you're basically forcing most of your people out of the community.
But you're not talking about income eligibility either, so it's not...
No, we're not. But it's sort of a free-market approach to say, okay, well, you'll have this inventory of units that will be rented that at least the average person can afford.
Right, but if I'm just to play devil's advocate, and I'm not saying my feelings about this one way or the other, but just throwing this out there, if I'm in Manhattan, and instead of taking a share for the summer, I'm making a bazillion dollars, I can get an affordable thing for a year and not do the summer share kind of thing. You know what I'm saying?
It's true.
But it's not because they're primary residents. That's provided they live in that unit and then commute to Manhattan.
They still have to be working...
Right, but there are ways...
Well, you have a lot of people in Manhattan with rent-controlled apartments...
Yeah, the law requires them to work in the community. That's still...
They don't have to work in the community.
Well, no, we're...
We're taking out that, that restriction.
That you have to work in the community.
And what, we're doing that because of the fair housing.
Correct, right. Work or be part of the EMS or fire, those restrictions have come out.
And family.
And family, yeah.
I thought you still have to work in the community.
I think you can keep, I think you could argue, if you work or live, just as long as you don't have to live. I think if you had both, you would be okay, but...
Work or live?
We've never been...
Once you have the apartment, you live.
Well, you're going to live.
But I'm just saying...
But year-round. So it's got to be year-round. Yeah, maybe we could put that in.
Makes sense.
Because, I look, I hear what you're saying, and like, and if we were, if we, if we had to, if we had to have people income-qualified, then we have a whole bureaucratic process.
It's just that what you're, you're right, and that, this, the conundrum we're always in with this, but if you're trying to say, you're trying to make it for those who can't afford it, you're implying that you're doing something for those people, and this may not get any of those people, other than, and it might actually be a windfall to somebody that maybe absolutely can afford this three times over.
Yeah, so I mean, it's basically, it's a market thing. So, I mean, I, I could afford to go to expensive restaurants, but I might choose to go to a cheaper one, just because it's less expensive, so...
But I, I, I don't want to lose intent.
If you have a, a large inventory, yes, some people might take advantage of it, I think, but if most of the people priced out of the housing market, they have a shot now. If those units get gobbled up by people who don't need it, I guess that could happen. I think it's more of a hypothetical than a reality.
See, if we take off live or work, which eliminates fair housing on that end, and we leave it open, then that situation might happen. So if you want to put an income back in there, they can't make more than 130% or top...
My, my only concern here is that we, you know, we don't lose sight of the intent of what we're trying to do, and that's to serve...
Right.
Our workforce that is caught, even in town hall, 60% of people live outside of Southampton because they have to, not because they want to. Nobody wants to struggle through that.
Here's my...
Hold on. We also have these other issues where you have people, you know, we have to identify what it is, that community, that we're trying to serve. You know, it's largely described as teachers and young teachers and first responders and, you know, young families trying to vest themselves or invest themselves in this community. young families trying to vest themselves or invest themselves in this community, and I, I think that's the target here, that, that's the group of people that we're trying to serve at most, and, you know, what we could measure who can fall into that gap, you know, where there's an ability to take advantage or it's a windfall for them, and I think that's something you really need to, you know, try to cut back as much as possible, at least to the four percent served now.
I love the question, I think it's a great question.
I think the way to solve it is if, if we take off all the requirements for the fair housing, I think then we have to put a cap on the income, because if it's going to be part of the housing program, if these apartments are going to come to us and we have to get the leases to make sure they're the right rent, then let's make sure they're the right people that are all under a hundred and thirty percent, which is our max income level. Then we're covered.
And so, if I'm a landlord here, and I've built now an accessory apartment, it's costing me a certain amount of money to put it in, you're telling me how much is the maximum rent I can charge? Now I have to find out whether the person who wants to rent it is income-qualified.
Right.
Which I have to now pry into their life and have them show me their tax-
Well, we do that now.
We do it now.
Yeah, I, I know, but it-
We do it now, because they don't want some-
Well, not for accessory apartments, we don't-
Not for accessory apartments.
Right now, we don't.
Well, not for accessory apartments now, but if we're requiring them to be affordable, how do we, you know, then-
You would just take in their, you know-
Affordable to home.
I would just, basically, I have an apartment, I, yeah, let's, using the, the rents that Tommy John gave me, let's say I have a two-bedroom apartment, I know I can't charge more than nineteen hundred and seventy-one dollars, a nice couple with a kid comes in, I can't just rent it to them, I gotta go to you and say, I have some, or, right?
They have to go to me with the lease anyway. Well, in, in, in a lot of cases, a diligent landlord is gonna do an income check anyway on a person.
Right.
Yeah, that's why they have a thing called safe rent.
They don't want to rent this-
Make sure there's no criminal record, make sure they can pay the rent, make sure they have fairly good credit, so that happens anyway if you went into an apartment complex, that's automatic, criminal back check and, and a rent check, rest, rest, safe rent.
I mean, it does solve two issues, it creates an affordable rent, and it does, would then guarantee that the person needed an affordable rent.
Right, now remember, right now, for a family, let's say it's a family of four, the maximum allowed in a two-bedroom apartment, the area median income is a hundred and sixteen thousand, the one-thirty is a hundred and thirty-six thousand, so you could have a police officer and a wife who works in the school district, maybe qualify, and that's still the people we're trying to keep, so I think that's not horrible.
Fifty-one.
And I think some of it is, we realize, like John said, this is trying to get people who are new into the housing market, we want to keep here, who are maybe graduated from college to come back, we also want to set the rents, right, at something so that they can transition to hopefully into homeownership. So you want to have the ability to ha, also have a savings component to this thing, right? So particularly those target audiences that we're trying to reach.
So, but, now somebody, because now we've created this affordable rent, they finally can save money.
That's right.
And maybe they're gonna get a promotion, or whatever it is, and stay in the community, and now suddenly they are above the threshold, they have to move out.
Well, even, even in the Section eight program, which is the lowest income or any of the affordable programs, you're allowed to increase that income about ten or fifteen percent a year, just so you don't kick people out. So there is a, a percentage, I don't know exactly what it is.
I don't think, I don't think you should be able to, you get in there, you're in there.
But you want to encourage them to use this, and other people-
All right, so you only have the income check in the beginning.
Most people will move up regardless.
The way it works is that if it goes over twenty percent-
Exactly, exactly, no, I agree with you, but we're not doing annual checks.
No.
No, and you're gonna set it at one-thirty.
Well, it would, it would be based upon when the rental permit is renewed, so it's a two-year rental permit, so when, right, so, right, so what happens is you're allowed to go over twenty percent, and then if you go beyond that, you have a year to, to remain in the unit.
Department.
To look for something else, that, that's a standard.
That's not a bad thing, because then it would free up that unit for somebody else who needs it.
Right, right, so there is a standard for that particular thing, because you want people to get a raise once in a while, I mean, and you can't-
But then there's no more housing for them to go into, and now they're living in Brookhaven again.
Yeah, and this could have the opportunity to save money for that goal.
But they're at an income level, that's a pretty good level, that in most, in most areas, they'd be able to afford housing, just not ours.
Not ours, but are we trying to-
I'm trying to keep these people in the yard.
Trying to do that, not just for a housing issue, for traffic issues as well.
Maybe at that point, they can afford a house, at that income level.
Yeah.
It's tough, though.
It's hard to fight the market, you know, with what, that we have out here, but to my point earlier, I really think that we need to get these built, and landlords wouldn't do it unless they were getting an amount of money. I think we need to, to bump up our original numbers, because all of this is moot if they don't get built by-
Just being aware, the higher the rent, the higher the assessed value, though, too.
If we're keeping the eligibility pool up to a hundred and thirty percent of median income, and we're making the rent-
It's based on a fixed rent.
Cap at seventy-five percent of median income, we're good, I think that, that makes sense.
But no, one size fits all, you know, if you're gonna add an accessory apartment with a whole bunch of additional costs, the argument holds true. But there are, there are also buildings where that conversion is not nearly as expensive. So it really is a case-by-case basis, you can't just say, I'm gonna apply this rule across the board, you know, with that motive in mind, because they, they're very, very different, the costs of conversion on these different buildings, different situations.
Well, this is the maximum rent, as Tommy John said, if you want to make a lower rent, well then, you know, they can always rent it for less.
Do we address parking at all and any of this stuff?
That's part of the code. Yeah, so it's part of the original accessory apartment law, which requires you to have at least one off-street parking space, and then our, our, our code, our rental code requires that you have, you can only have one car per bedroom plus one additional.
So if I add two bedrooms over my garage, and I have a, now, because you're targeting like a, and a twenty over, so I have like a three or four-bedroom house, plus a two-bedrooms and over the garage, that's five to six bedrooms, so how many cars is that?
So one per bedroom, plus one additional.
So that's seven cars, and where are they gonna go?
Off-site.
They have to be off-street.
Off-site.
Off, off the street, right.
No, they gotta be on-site, they gotta provide it, if they can't provide it, they're not meeting the code.
What kind of driveway do you need for seven cars?
Family right now with three bedrooms could have seven cars.
And we have a lot of places that are not compliant that do.
Because they're adult children, you know, that work-
Actually, and right now, they can't, that's actually a provision we passed that, Max's rentals are four cars.
For the entire property.
But if it's owner-occupied, with six bedrooms in a, in a, that's a significant-
Yeah, then it's, then it's, the owner occupied gets, gets one, one car per bedroom plus one.
With the rental, so that's-
I, I know that ordinance enforcement is talking about eliminating the four, four-car maximum.
Eliminating the four-car maximum?
We, we, you know, we, I brought legislation that says if you're renting a house, regardless of the number of bedrooms plus one, you can't have more than four.
I remember.
I, I really, I kind of intended it to be more, no more than four visible from the street, but it says no more than four on the property.
Where are you gonna hide them?
Well-
It depends on the property.
They-
The neighbors are gonna know they're there, if they're hidden behind some bushes or not.
Or, ordinance enforcement is asking to, to go back to the one car per bedroom plus one.
But who cares, I mean-
Who cares?
Yeah.
A neighbor cares.
What, that you're-
They have now seven cars hidden behind the next door to them.
Well, you have like, you have houses being rented with seven bedrooms.
My point is you have increased cars and increased traffic, I mean, that has to be looked at, I'm assuming you're gonna do a DGIS and all this.
No.
No, 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 this law, no.
Why not?
No, why would we?
Because you're giving as of right an increase in density, and now you just discuss the fact that this could add significant parking and traffic issues on blocks. In North Sea, you got like, what, four hundred and fifty-three potential added apartments? I mean, that's, you know, intense wear miles, it's a lot.
But if you take, but if you take into consideration what our historical, without having any rent limits on how many accessory apartment we've got, we've had in the last ten years, you can't assume-
Not, that's why we do a study.
You can't, you can't assume, no, but you can assume what our historical data says.
It's anecdotal, I would-
You know, it's not, it's not anecdotal at all.
Well, we're doing SECR, SECR's different than a GIS, but-
Because you need to do a general-
Well, definitely have to do SECR, but there's no, there's nothing to say that we automatically have to do it with EIS.
You're ignoring, you're ignoring the fact that, you know, A, our comprehensive plan of zoning is, it was based, you know, you know, that environmental impact has been done already, and we're not going beyond that, because we're retiring these credits that were used for preserved land in the area.
I'm not ignoring any of that.
So you're not having a density impact greater than what the comprehensive plan was based on.
I'm not ignoring any of that.
So there's no need for GIS.
But you're changing parking and traffic, those are other environmental factors that you have to-
We're not changing parking.
We'll do SECR on it.
If you're doing seven cars, potentially-
Well, that was an hypothetical.
The existing, the existing code is the existing code, we're not proposing to change the code.
But now you've added an accessory structures with rental that you didn't have before, in terms of parking, you're going from thirty to twenty.
No, but the den-
One spot, right? No, but the density that is, you're talking about going from thirty to twenty thousand square feet.
Right, correct.
And you have to look at, Jay makes the point, what is the existing density where it talks about accessory apartments in the original comp plan?
Right.
We absolutely have to do SECR, but to jump to saying we need a DEIS, at this point in time, is totally inappropriate, we gotta see what the potential impacts are and do it, it's gonna be probably an unlisted action, and go through the analysis, but to jump to the fact to say we're doing an environmental impact statement, you can't say that.
I think you have to, is my opinion, from, and I just modelized things that I've done, I think you need to do.
Well, we'll cross the bridge when we get there, but you guys will review this.
You've got thousands of blocks.
So could I, I have two questions, quick questions, if you may.
Nothing's quick.
The first question is, we're doing the septic, the sewage credits, a lot of these apartments are going to be in the zero to two travel time, is there an advantage that we might have where we can incentivize the biller, and hopefully to meet some of those concerns, because we're gonna increase valuation if we put in an IA system or make that part of that, that we're already rebating that, would that be, that's in addition to the valuation of the property, if, if their appraisal rates go up, we've already seen that, that these systems have value to, to homes, that we could mandate the use of these systems in these places, these accessory apartments, when we have that opportunity, because you are going to increase the flow rates by adding additional people to that property.
Outside the priority areas?
Outside the priority area.
If you, if you feel-
I, it's something that worth exploring, because, you know, if we had that opportunity-
Because if it was in the priority area, they'd have to.
They'd have to anyway, but, but I'm, I'm assuming that quite a number of these would be outside of that, and I don't know when we're gonna catch up with that, we're working on that right now, obviously, it may become a moot point.
We can map it, and see, I can, I can map the nineteen hundred units and see how they fall out.
Because it would incentivize the homeowner to make the conversion.
But remember, some of these homeowners might be just doing, if they have a four-bedroom house and they have a high ranch, they would be eliminating two bedrooms to put two bedrooms in an apartment, or one or the, so it depends, I think it's, you're gonna have to have some type of exemption, that they're not really adding any bedrooms, they're just creating an apartment in their home, you know, inside the-
Or what you're offering is-
No, I'm saying if you have a home and you're doing your accessory apartment inside your existing structure, you'd have to eliminate, you're probably eliminating a bedroom, so you'd have to allow for that.
Unless you're finishing a basement or something-
Yeah, and adding bedrooms in a basement, if you're substituting, so I mean, there might be an occasion where people are doing that in their house, and-
You have to, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, we don't know how many of those are in the one-thirty.
Yeah, yeah, we just talked about that.
Or they want to build a studio out of an existing room with an outside entrance, you know, something that isn't really huge.
It doesn't automatically trigger-
But that reduces one bedroom.
Well, what if they're building a, a structure in addition to their home?
Well, that's different, now you're adding bedrooms.
And you're adding.
But if you're doing something in your house.
Your change flow rate, you're gonna go to the Department of Health.
Oh, oh, but the Department of Health may not require you to change your sanitary system.
It will, in our, in our town.
They, they will, only if you, if you exceed the bedroom design specs, but that's just-
Let's say you have a five-bedroom house, now you're dropping to a two-bedroom apartment on one side of the house, and a one-bedroom apartment, you actually went from a five-bedroom house down to a three-bedroom, total three-bedroom.
It's just, how many bedrooms do you have on-site?
Let's say I have five.
And if you're not increasing over five, you're not get, they, for accessory apartments, any municipalities have accessory apartment law, they don't treat it as a separate unit, they treat it based on the number of bedrooms on that site.
All right, so I went from a five-bedroom house, I'm an empty nester, I'm gonna put an apartment in, I'm gonna keep one side of the house, my side with-
Two bedrooms.
Two bedrooms, I'm gonna put a one-bedroom apartment on the other side of the house, so I'm gonna end up with now four bedrooms instead of five, I went down one bedroom.
They're not gonna make you do anything, if you still have five bedrooms, it doesn't-
That's such a, an unusual situation, what I'm talking about is incentivizing a homeowner to say, we can give you the rebate, we can, at this moment, we can give you the rebate, we can help you put in an IA system, and you're incentivized to do that, because your property value is going to increase, you're gonna have more equity in your property, you're gonna have greater resale value, because that, we're already seeing is happening, that's the only reason I'm bringing that up.
Well, that's the voluntary problem, but you were saying you're mandated if you put an accessory apartment into one to two years.
You are, if you change the flow rate within that footprint.
Yeah, yeah.
You're talking about a situation, I can't imagine that someone's gonna go from five bedrooms to three, because of the change.
I know, I, I know the law we passed, so if you're within the zero to two, and you're doing a twenty-five percent expansion, you're triggered, right, or if you're building a new house, you're triggered, but if you're within the same footprint and you're just renovating or moving walls-
No, if you change bedrooms, the health department will require it.
Only if the health department requires it, you're triggered.
Yeah, if you have a four-bedroom system, that's your threshold, that's four or lower, if you go to a fifth, they're gonna make you upgrade your system.
Absolutely.
That's it.
He's giving a scenario, though, where you're-
That you're not, that you're not changing-
That's gonna happen, I-
If you have four, and you're gonna create, and now you're gonna have a three-bedroom house with a one-bedroom apartment, you're not having to think-
Can you create a kitchen with a one-bedroom apartment?
Yeah.
So if you, so-
If it's not, if you don't have a kitchen-
How does it not impact the flow, if you're adding a kitchen, even if you're reducing, you're adding like kitchen-
It's the way the health department, bloody stupid, whether I agree with that or not, I would have some, I have some problems with the way they do it, but that's what we have right now.
A single-family home, I know in the motel business-
Well, they, they did it because they realized we have a housing issue.
If you're going from a single family ostensibly to a two-family.
Municipalities that don't have an accessory apartment law, you have to account for that as additional dwelling you-
Like, ten guys a day.
There was a policy decision to say, we have a housing problem on Long Island, or particularly in Suffolk County, and they said, if the municipality adopts an accessory apartment law, they're gonna treat that unit as just an additional bedroom in that house.
So, well, yeah, so anyway, whatever they do, they do, so if the health department makes you upgrade the sanitary system, and you're in the zero to two, then they come to us for a grant to get an IA system, right, they qualify for the rebate.
Even in the, even in the medium, rebates are, are eligible, just not mandated, but if you wanted to do it in the medium area, you're still eligible for the rebate.
So this had, this follows into the second question, which is part two of this, was that we have a subculture of, of rentals, where, that aren't permitted, that sort of exists, have been existing there for years and years and years, their incentive is to legalize those, those things, is to become part of the accessory apartment law, which would then also impact the IA system, because they're not accounted for within the county health department, because they're not looking for it, they're not asking for it until they are asked.
I don't know if they're here yet.
So-
They're here.
They are?
Okay, that's part of this issue, too.
So let me, let me just add-
I wanted to get an answer.
I'm sorry, man, I want to get Suffolk County Water Authority.
You know, so, are we eligible for that as well, in the accessory apartment law, because when they legalize, because now you're gonna have a septic issue, because those apartments that are currently being rented illegally are now, you know, they're gonna apply for legal rental, and then they're gonna have to go through the same issue with adding septic or IA, and that, and that follows-
They would be eligible, but they'll only be eligible if they're legal now, and they're only gonna come forward is if they can meet the standards.
Well, they want to come forward to legalize.
Yeah, but they still have to meet, they still-
Get people to legalize.
They still need to meet the standard in order to legalize.
Okay.
All right, so, because I do want to move on to the next thing, because Suffolk County Water Authority is here, so let me just recap as quickly as possible, okay, and, and what the follow-ups are, so, guys, can I just have your attention for a second, so, under this new law, which Cara is gonna incorporate these changes, all, all, sorry, all future accessory apartments would be affordable, right, any, from the date the law becomes effective, any new accessory apartments that get added would be affordable, the new inventory areas, where you could go down to half an acre from the, the three-quarters of an acre, would be in the less dense portions of town, so we'd open up that in those, only those areas, so we'd increase the inventory of possible apartments, the rents would be capped throughout the program at seventy-five percent of the area median income, the incomes would be capped at a hundred and thirty percent of area median income, and we would assign or extinguish a sanitary credit from our affordable-
Development right.
A development right from land preserved in that school district, for any, whatever the percentage of that credit corresponding to the apartment, so if it's a two-bedroom apartment, it's larger than a one-bedroom or studio, so, and, and that would be the case for all of these.
And the development right would have to be in the school district.
Yes, and so then Cara, you would then take all of what we said today, incorporate it into a draft of the resolution.
Good luck.
And, and mostly there.
I think we're close.
No, it's good, we're very close.
And then Kyle, you will look at the SECR issues that Christine mentioned, and make a recommendation as to what type of action this is, and what is the necessary steps, if it's an EAF or whether it's an EIS, all right?
Just one thing, I think you said seventy percent AMI?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five, right?
Seventy-five.
Did I say seventy, I meant seventy-five.
Seventy-five.
And I, I still have issues with that from the basis of the discussion.
Okay, any other questions? Any other questions? We're good? It's good, so if we could get this hopefully by the next work session, we'll keep it on.
Can we get it circulated to us just a little bit before work session, because by the time we get it, it's like we're trying to, it's a lot to, with the particular numbers. And you'll change those numbers?
We have to digest it here as opposed to being prepped.
All right. I think we're getting close to what would be a very good law, I do.
Yeah.
Very important law. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Janice, you wanna get?
Jake, if you have time later, I'm just swapping this out in case we're changing the Halloween event.
Okay, that's scary. Boo, boo, boo. Boo as a, as a ghost, as you're booing me, as a ghost.
Just hear where the livestream is down, but it is, the media is recording and will be posted later on our CCTV, it'll be shown in also...
Morning.
For now, it's not live streaming.
Okay.
In case, there's a couple of issues in there and they're kind of...
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Good morning.
Morning.
All right, do you guys from the Water Authority wanna come up to the front table? Appreciate it.
Do you want me?
Stay there for now, and then we'll bring you here. And do we, we're doing this audio visually or, right, we gotta...
Yes.
Let's make sure we have a screen or something to look at. Charlie, you got the baby? Do you want to use the big screen or no?
You know I was an IT person.
Just give us a second to get the audio up, visual off. Tara's here.
Oh, now Tara's gone.
Can I?
Maybe we could get someone from IT?
You're not confident in this?
Well, I'm, I'm watching you. I'm good. There we go. All right, I am confident in you, Charlie.
When in doubt, regroup.
Sorry, we're getting started a little bit later than we had scheduled you guys for.
That's fine.
We're in town time.
We understand how things go.
It happens. Well, we are working on affordable housing issues, which is always a challenging topic. But we're getting close to, I think, a very, very good law for the town that will increase the inventory of affordable.
Considering that's the issue, I'm surprised it's only 25 minutes late.
We've worked on it for about three years, so...
Three years, 20 minutes.
Which is an awful pause, though.
I think it was loaded earlier, it was on the screen.
Yeah, I know.
Oh, okay.
But that was early.
That was early.
We have the flash drive, right? We have a flash drive if you need it.
No, we have it on the screen here. It's on that.
Is Robbie here as well, Vinnie? Is Rob? Okay. And everybody has a copy of this presentation, right?
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna close though, yeah.
Just appreciate your patience.
Now everybody's calling Joe at the same time.
How we making out? Got something.
There you go, you got a picture. Looks nice. Keep that soon enough. A little snow.
Joe's behind you. The magic touch.
Do you wanna start and have the presentation catch up to us, or?
No, I'd rather get it right the first time.
Well, it's being filmed. So, and they're going to put a link up on our portal to a streaming video from another site, so that people can view it now if it's running. Because they may, we have program issues.
I trust that they'll be up and running in a second, so...
This part will get up, but the video will not.
Okay.
All right, so, thank you, Joe. All right, so, all right, we're gonna move on to this next item on our agenda, which is a presentation of a draft proposal by the Suffolk County Water Authority regarding operational agreement with the town of Southampton. We are joined by Jeff Sabo, who's CEO of Suffolk County Water Authority, Joe Picorni, who is an engineer and deputy CEO for operations, Elizabeth Masalo, Chief Financial Officer, and Timothy Hopkins, General Counsel to the Water Authority. So this is continuing a conversation we started, entertaining the idea of having Suffolk County Water Authority act in a management capacity for the water district for which the town board are commissioners of. A number of issues arose that caused the community to approach us to say, you know, "What about the Water Authority? Is this, would it be beneficial, not beneficial, to have a larger entity managing our water in the Hampton Bay area?" So we have received a draft proposal, and Jeff Sabo is going to be introducing it to the town board. Jeff, I'll turn it over to you, thank you for coming.
Thank you, thank you very much Supervisor Schneiderman. As he said, my name is Jeff Sabo, I'm the Chief Executive Officer. We welcome this opportunity to come before the town board and talk a little bit about the proposal that we sent over. Before we get into the specifics of the proposal, in the PowerPoint, we're just going to go through some items that I think you'll find of interest related to the Water Authority and the business that we run. So, the Suffolk County Water Authority is an independent public benefit corporation, operating under New York State authorities' law. The Water Authority is one of the largest groundwater suppliers in the country. We serve approximately 1.2 million people, and we began our operations in 1951. We operate without taxing ability and on a not-for-profit basis. Most of our revenues are generated from the sale of public drinking water. We have about 550 total employees, that includes both management and union employees. And I think an important point to point out here is that we have the lowest water rates in the country when you factor in the cost of living. So that analysis was recently conducted by Goldman Sachs, and we're very proud of that. If you look across the thousands of water agencies in the United States, to be able to say that and to be proud of that, I think that's something that the town board and the residents of Hampton Bays will find interesting. We also are among the top one percentile of water suppliers in the United States with the financial stability, with tremendous financial stability, holding two AAA bond ratings. That was determined by Fitch and Standard and Poor's, I think it was five years ago, but just reconfirmed this past September when we had a new issue with bonds. Suffolk County Water Authority has our in-house staff of talented and certified engineers and hydrogeologists, constantly working to develop new supplies and to perform research to deploy a state-of-the-art treatment as rapidly as possible. This next slide here will sort of give you an overview of the Water Authority and the areas that we serve. You can see it stretches from Melville in the west out to Montauk Point in the east. The areas that are shaded are territories not, not currently supplied by the Water Authority. So you have an area up in the Huntington area, Dix Hills, those are separate municipally-run districts. You have an area in the center of the island in Smithtown, the Smithtown and St. James Water District, where we wholesale them water, but they operate their own district. Then you have the Riverhead Water District, which is independent from us, and of course, the Hampton Bays District. You'll also notice that there are some areas that are not shaded at all. Those are residents of Suffolk who are still on private wells, and they're still anywhere between guessing 40,000 and 80,000 of those in Suffolk. The stars indicate the Water Authority's regional or satellite offices. We're headquartered over in Oakdale, New York, but we stretch from Huntington to Bay Shore, Hop Dog, Quorum, West Hampton, East Hampton. We have offices throughout the county. Typically, the offices have a construction staff and a production control staff, so that they can respond to emergencies as they arise. That's the Hampton Bays District, you can see we overlaid that geographic area into our map. Water Authority has 585 active wells, 237 pump stations. So those wells may be, there may be three or four at one particular well field, and that number changes depending on what we're taking, putting in service and taking out of service. 64 storage tanks, 68 million gallons of stored water available to the residents that we serve. And certainly, the, this number may seem staggering when you compare it to a district like Hampton Bays, but our total annual pumpage is about 74 billion gallons. Our average daily pumpage is 210 million gallons. I keep forgetting to hit this clicker, I apologize. So, the Water Authority also has one of the largest groundwater testing laboratories in the United States. We have over 40 chemists and lab personnel. Our in-house standards for water quality testing is often more stringent than state and federal regulations. I wish I could take credit for that, since I've been CEO of the Water Authority the last nine years or so, but it's actually been a practice in place long before I got there. The Water Authority tests for almost 300, almost 400 compounds, 400 total compounds. That's 250 more than required by regulators. So we certainly, from a testing, you know, protocol, we certainly go above and beyond. Typically, we analyze about 53,000 samples a year, producing 165,000 test results. And as I mentioned earlier, we tested a higher frequency than required. So, yes.
One quick question on, on that. Having your own laboratory, what is the turnaround time from when you test to when you get the results?
So, depending on the compound, but we test on a daily basis, you know, we'll test at the wellhead and also in the distribution system. But depending on the particular compound, the results are, can vary from a couple of days to a week?
Yeah, I mean, when a sample's taken...
Particularly questioning regarding the, some of the emerging contaminants like the PFOA, PFOS.
Well, some of those, we've actually developed the methodologies for making those tests. So for PFOA and PFOS, we can actually run those almost within 24 hours, they get done very quickly. But some of them take a lot longer, some of them we actually do send out, our radiological samples we do send out. But for most of our testing, a turnaround of three days or so for a full suite is not uncommon. Bacteriological tests, obviously, within 24 hours it takes to develop a Bacte test.
Okay.
So you developed a methodology nationwide for detecting PFOS and PFOS?
We have participated in all the laboratory tests.
Well, in one method, we developed one method.
One method, yeah.
Or different types of methods you can use.
In a related question, the MTBE contamination, you all have a patent pending, pending for that, is that correct?
For MTBE, I don't think we have...
Oh, it's a different additive for this?
Maybe for PFOS.
One for dioxide. So we've developed an advanced oxidation system that uses UV light and peroxide to treat that very hard to treat compound, one-four dioxide, that does really not do well when used with carbon for treatment, it runs right through the carbon. So one-four dioxide is treated with AOP. Right now, we have our first in the state in service right now at our Commercial Boulevard facility, and we're actually working on the design and are just about to submit it to the state for a second system at Smith Street in East Farmingdale.
And that, that certainly, so we've been at the forefront when it comes to unregulated contaminants, one-four dioxide being one of them, that I think, you know, depending on decisions made by Governor Cuomo's Water Quality Council, you may be hearing quite a bit more about one-four dioxide and a standard or a regulation or an MCLG for that particular compound. Luckily, several years ago, it's gotta be five or six years ago, we decided to invest, you know, the resources and the staffing and the funds to try to develop the technology to treat it. We've done that, but the issue with the compound is that it's, it impacts many, many, many different communities across Long Island, and it's something that we will all have to deal with. So, we're here, you know, primarily to talk about, not only brag about the Water Authority and talk about our history, which we're very proud of, but also to talk about operating agreements, and in particular, the one that we have, or we're hoping to have with the town of Southampton and the Hampton Bays Water District. These types of agreements, these types of operating agreements, we have a long history of entering into them with other entities and municipalities. Over the years, we've, we have agreements to operate the Riverside Water District, the Brentwood Water District in the town of Islip, East Farmingdale Water District with the town of Babylon, and the Fair Harbor Water District. Also, we have Deering Harbor, just recently over in Shelter Island, we entered into a one-year agreement to operate their public drinking supply, and we're working on executing a long-term agreement with them. So, an operating agreement is helpful, because the Water Authority's size and resources make it better able to handle water quality issues and quantity concerns related to emerging contaminants than a relatively small district. Our costs are spread out, our cost to operate, our capital cost is spread out on a county-wide customer base, which help keeps rates stable. So if you had a $10 million capital project and you needed to move quickly, that cost would be, you know, typically bore by the residents in that relatively small district. We have the advantage because of our size that it's spread, spread out over many, many customers, so the impact is far less. We also have a proactive approach to treatment in our robust capital budgets. That mean that we're better able to address water quality concerns of our residents. Typically, our capital budget on an annual basis is about $75 million. We've been fairly consistent with that over the last eight to, eight to 10 years. And we expect, because of the aging infrastructure and the 7,000 miles of water main that we presently have in our system and the 62 storage tanks, that as the system ages, that number will need to increase. The benefits of entering into an agreement with the Water Authority, certainly 24/7 response. We have staff, you know, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, that are available and respond. We have an emergency control center in Bay Shore, we have a backup facility in West Hampton. So our staff is constantly monitoring our system, our vast network, our vast distribution system. We also have a laboratory and treatment expertise on hand that could be called and used as a resource at any given time. Certainly, we have the ability to move very quickly. One of the benefits of being an authority is the ability to move quickly and to address concerns that need to be addressed, like capital improvements. Also, system reliability through various interconnections. The Water Authority's system and the Hampton Bays system will sort of act, there'll be some redundancy there. We're able to sort of back each other up a little bit. And as we mentioned, you know, tremendous benefits with rate stabilization. As I mentioned earlier, we have the lowest rates in the nation. So, the Water Authority, after reviewing and having numerous discussions with the town supervisor and town board and staff, we would provide safe, potable drinking water to the roughly 6,400 Hampton Bays residents. We would certainly manage all of their customer accounts and provide that customer service. The Hampton Bays Water District employees, all of them would be offered an opportunity to come and to work at the Water Authority. And we also would provide $6.1 million worth of capital improvements to the Hampton Bays District within the first three years. Capital improvements focused will improve water quality, efficiency, and reliability within the system. The town, if they so decide, would have rate stabilization to keep rates frozen. There would be no new Water District debt, right? No new debt would be incurred, and eventually, that debt would be retirement through the payment of, of the tax levy. The town would have the ability to cancel the agreement at any given time. Typically, these agreements are for 40 years, but the town board and the town supervisor would, through notification, would be able to at any point during that time decide that they wanted to take, you know, take back the district and say, "Thank you, Water Authority, but we're gonna do this on our own." The Water Authority would have the responsibility for all future capital improvements. So the cost, and I think during our discussions, we've identified in the neighborhood of $10 million, maybe, I forget off the top of my head, it may be a little bit more, a little bit less, but there would be a $6 million investment over three years immediately for iron filtration, some, some other benefits to improve water quality. And what wasn't done, the, in that initial three-year period, would be put into the Water Authority's overall capital program and addressed on an annual basis, depending on the priority. SCWA employment, as I mentioned earlier, the Water Authority will offer employment to the Hampton Bays Water District employees. There are certain benefits to that. We both participate in the New York State retirement system. We certainly, I believe we both have health benefits provided by the New York State Empire Plan. An analysis of existing salaries and benefits, Hampton Bays employees and positions at the Water Authority with similar titles and similar responsibilities indicated that many of the employees would actually make out, financially, would be paid a higher wage. And I think, you know, this is something key that we certainly don't want to skip over and want to highlight. There's opportunity for advancement. One of the things that the Water Authority, because of its size, it allows professional growth, it allows an employee to move from one position to another and to, to seek higher wages and more responsibility. So I think that that's a tremendous benefit for the, for the existing staff in Hampton Bays. We also have a regional office over in West Hampton that we would continue to utilize and sort of absorb the staff from Hampton Bays.
Would you have any kind of internal preferences in terms of where an employee works? So, let's say somebody said, "Okay, I wanna shift over and now work for the Water Authority." What if you then shifted them to work in Babylon or something, and they maybe, they're living in Hampton Bays? That's a big difference.
You know, it's a very good question, I'm sure it's a question of interest and concern for the existing employees. I would think, we consider the employees of the Hampton Bays District to be resources, right? They're our experts, they know the system very, very well. I would think initially, those employees would be utilized within the district to ensure that there isn't a misstep or anyone drops the ball when it comes to any sort of customer service or capital work. If they bid a position, right, that's open in the Water Authority, it's clearly indicated where their position is located. It may be at one of our other regional offices, but they would do that knowingly. But I would think at least initially, we would, we could come to some agreement to have them stay within the South Fork or the, you know... the, you know, something like that.
Typically, what we would do is we would, if we assigned them to the West Hampton office, that's where they would remain. If we were to reassign them on a temporary basis for a temporary operational need, typically, what an employee gets is time and mileage for that travel. And then if they chose to, they could bid another position if they saw a position that they wanted to bid on through the union process that may be paid more. They would have notice of where that position was. And so they could bid on that position to seek the job, but they're not required to. So they could stay in West Hampton. If they were transferred on a temporary basis, there's time and mileage.
Okay.
And employees who would potentially move from the Hampton Bays Water District to the Suffolk County Water District, would they be given the same titles?
Well, we don't have the same titles, but we have-
You said they were commensurate, right?
Yes, yes. What we tried to do was looking at the existing titles and the job responsibilities. If I recall correctly, these are New York State Civil Service titles that have job descriptions and certain job requirements. We're not part of New York State Civil Service, but we have a similar format where we have, you know, duties, requirements, minimum requirements, expectations within the job. So we did our best to sort of match them up.
Okay.
I have a question. When you do infrastructure improvements or capital improvements, it's paid by the countywide Suffolk County Water Authority under your auspices, right?
Correct.
So the $6.1 million you're talking about in capital improvements for the district, which would be the Hampton Bays Water District, over the three years, are you saying that during that three-year period that the district then would not be reciprocally responsible for infrastructure costs outside of its district boundaries?
Yes.
So if you're doing improvement in wherever took place where you have, where you're doing work, and it's spread out amongst the county residents that are part of the Suffolk County Water Authority, would the Hampton Bays, what was formerly the Hampton Bays Water District, would that district still be charged with that, or are they just going to be taking care of their capital costs?
So we wouldn't separate out the funds like that when we enter into an operation agreement. The district is just responsible for paying whatever that charge would be. We don't break it out between different capital projects. But as part of the agreement, we're saying we're making a commitment to make at least $6.1 million worth of capital improvements within the district. It would likely be more, but the district would have no responsibility for making any capital improvements at all. So, once the agreement's signed, all capital projects and all maintenance and everything is our responsibility, and we have to pay for it through our budgets.
So they wouldn't pay for other infrastructure being done?
No, they would not. Technically speaking, we would take whatever revenues we get for operating the district, and we'd allocate it accordingly. But that wouldn't be specific. We wouldn't take funds from the district and spend them at other places.
And I think it's important to note, too, we say, you know, 6.1 within three years. We're using that three-year period because there is, there takes time to draft contracts, there takes time to award contracts. So from start to finish, there are priorities that if this agreement is reached, we would move immediately. We would move immediately to execute a contract to install, you know, the iron filtration, iron and magnesium filtration at that well. It's not that we would wait a year or two to initiate that process. If this agreement's signed, we're moving forward. So I would suspect that a vast amount of that 6.1 would be on the front end of that three-year period. But I also know, we're realistic, there are, you know, there are project complications. There are issues with vendors. There's insurance requirements that may take, you know, the process drag on for a couple of months. So just normal sort of contractual issues that come up with when you're dealing with large capital projects.
And would you say that the $6.1 million is, of capital improvements are needed in the district?
Yes.
Right.
Yes. Yep. After, you know, Joe, Mr. Pecorni and his engineering staff have been on-site, they have met with the Hampton Bays staff, they've done several tours. We've had our engineering people look at the different facilities. We've read reports by the town's consultants. We feel that we have a, you know, a real good handle on the needs of the district. We want to touch upon customer service a little bit. So certainly, we would conduct routine annual flushing, which would help system water quality overall. That's something we do on a consistent basis, ensuring that, you know, hydrants are flushed and any possible sediment or anything else is removed from the distribution system. We're able to fast-track main break responses. It seemed, based on the information we saw, that you had a somewhat limited number of water main breaks. But one of the benefits, it's, you know, February, it's a Friday night at 10 o'clock, we are able to deploy our crews very quickly. In fact, we just, within the last year, added a new system for callouts, which reduced that callout time by just over a half hour. We're able to mobilize. And that makes it better for the employees getting to the job, and it makes it better for the customers who are without water.
Jeff, and while you click the button, so we get the next thing up there. One of the mains is under Shinnecock Bay. And we did have a break. It snapped. Do you have the ability to respond to a break like that? Do you have divers?
We don't have divers, although some of the staff are-
We have a couple that do.
Yeah, that do. Not certified for water quality purposes. With something like that, that is relatively unique. You know, we have a distribution system on Fire Island. So we're not unfamiliar with dealing with emergencies that may come up because of the conditions of that particular water main.
I noticed in the capital plan, there is a provision to put the pipe from down Dune Road.
Right.
The land-based pipe. And when we dealt with it, and the district did a great job in putting basically fire hoses across the bridge, the temporary supply water until the water main, that's a shut-off the water main. So it wasn't just pouring out water into the bay. But then they were able to get it repaired. It did take some time.
That is a unique event, right? That is something that is out of the norm. I was trying to talk about sort of the day-to-day things that would come up. But certainly, if that situation existed, we would ensure that we had either a contractor in place that could mobilize quickly, or, you know, train existing staff to make sure that the work got done. Other than that extreme example, I don't think we could identify something that would be out of the norm for us.
That's pretty much the worst case and the longest lead time to repair type thing that I could imagine, that if that was integrated in our system.
You guys don't have like a water tanker or truck that could-
Well, we do. We have portable tankers that we do deploy when people are out of water and we can't get water to them for some reason. We have about a half a dozen of those.
Could have been a solution for that area, too.
Absolutely, sure.
And it's not uncommon that we would take it and we would have somebody shuttle it back and forth and refill it as a customer needs it. But we wouldn't want to do that for too long. And I would want to look, you know, if we did go forward with this, at how we address the Ponquag Bridge. Are we going to do that main extension right away? Is it going to be part of the 6.1? Or is it something that we're going to put into our program and get to because we think that it's stable right now? And in talking with your staff, it seems like it's stable right now. So we have to make a decision on whether we're going to do it right away or whether we're going to plan it and do it sometime in the future. It just gets more expensive as it goes, as time goes on. So putting it off isn't necessarily the best thing to do.
So the last three points I want to make related to customer service, I've mentioned them before. 24-hour response, West Hampton office, and, you know, the ability to have the existing staff for at least a transition period work in the area to, you know, help train the Water Authority staff on their particular needs. So this next slide, I think, is a summary of some of the capital work that we've identified. We'd like to, I don't know, Joe, if you want to, I don't know if you want to go through item by item, or if you want to just review it and see if there are any particular questions with any of the projects.
You want me to go quickly through them?
Yeah.
Okay. So the first item, obviously, as Jeffrey was talking about, is an iron removal system, iron and manganese removal system for plant number four. The Water Authority has built and installed about 30 of these type of plants, so we're well-versed at their construction, design, and operation. We have a pretty good handle on what they cost, and $2.5 million estimate is a pretty good estimate.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
I was shown some water sampling data from the Water District, and although at plant four, there was, I think, higher iron, I thought the manganese readings were higher at plant one.
I think that in, looking at the two of them, there are manganese and iron at both of them. The iron was significantly high at plant number four.
Okay.
So I think that that, I mean, in general, that will generate water quality issues, brown, rusty water is certainly something constituents complain about. The manganese level at plant number one, I don't have the results right in front of you, but I think there was one offending well that was particularly problematic. This is the kind of thing where the interconnections between our two systems is going to help. Because what that's going to do, that's going to allow us to back off on the operation of offending wells. And we're not going to need to use the well that has the higher manganese. So my staff looked at it. Our thought was well number, plant number four was the best place to aim the gun. But that's still certainly something we would discuss with your staff.
Okay.
Get maybe more insight from them on what the operating experience has been, and decide whether it's going to go to number one or number four. That's still, I mean, again, it's based on our review of the water quality that we had.
Okay.
The H2M report that we were given that assessed the condition of the tanks recommended that the two tanks be recoded actually immediately. So, we have 64 of those tanks in our fleet. We know what those cost to recode. The larger tank, we figured-
I think the, what's it, the Bello Pond one was worse in the report than the-
Yeah, it's actually a bigger one had the, was the worst one, I believe. The, is it a million gallon tank or is it? A million gallon tank was in the worst shape, I believe.
But I thought you weren't doing them, you were doing one initially and another one a year later.
Well, when we, when we talked about how we would spend the $6.1 million initial money, the larger one was definitely the one that needed more attention.
Because that's a-
More immediate attention.
And that's a $3.5 million, right?
It's an extra half million to coat that one.
Right. But it's a three and a half. So of the 6.1-
So you're already at six.
Half of it is just on that.
Yeah. If you do the iron removal system and you do that, you're at six already.
These are your priorities? You put this in ascending order?
Not necessarily, no.
Okay.
But in looking at the two things that were important, the tank condition and the iron and manganese, those seem like likely targets.
So the first and the third items would probably be-
Correct.
Pretty much immediate.
Now, you know, we would, again, we're looking at H2M's report. A lot of times, what we like to do is a robot inspection, which is we run, put an underwater vehicle inside the tank and do a detailed inspection of the interior, get our people on the exterior, look closely at the exterior. If there's a way that the interior can wait, and maybe we do a top coat of the exterior, we might be able to do something like that, giving us more capital money available to do something else.
Okay.
So we like to, you know, these coatings, it's very obviously expensive to do one tank. When you have 64, you look at the cost of that, it's huge. So we like to prolong them as much as possible. We do a lot of power washing of our tanks. Once the coating is in good shape, to prolong the coating. So I would, I would look very carefully before we spend 3.5 million on this, so that we got the best bang for our buck.
Sure.
But along those lines, the 6.1 million, as you alluded to originally, was that, we shouldn't think of that as a fixed number either.
That's the minimum we're committing to within the first three.
Is that sort of a credit, in a way, for the fact that the Hampton Bays Water District has already put in infrastructure that you guys would be managing, and they bore that course entirely by themselves?
I don't know if I would refer to it as a credit. I don't, how would you, is there a way to explain that?
Well, we took a look at, basically, the Hampton Bays Water District revenues, and we looked at what would we have to borrow to come in and then address any of the engineers' concerns with the infrastructure. And in doing that, that's how we came up with the dollar value of what the Water Authority needs to borrow to support your infrastructure.
Right. With the next item here, the replacement of all water meter accounts, we, we just, the Water Authority just finished, we have about 400,000 accounts, residential and commercial, serving 1.2 million people. We just finished a nine-year cap, $75 million capital program to convert all of our meters to these AMR, these automated meters, where staff, you know, no longer have to go door-to-door to get a read quarterly on how much water you consumed. Now, we can drive by the neighborhood and pick up the information. It's an extremely beneficial program. It gives folks accurate reads. It has allowed for us to really move forward and be at the forefront of meter reading. But we just finished that program. In fact, I'm just announcing it to my board this coming month. We would do the same. We'd pick up another 6,400, and we would convert, the program wouldn't be over. We would move to convert the Hampton Bays meters to the AMR system. The estimate here calls for about $2.4 million. That's if we hired a contractor, or just using the estimate that we got from our existing contractor. But one of the things that we did to save money, that I think was really worthwhile, about halfway through our conversion to AMR, we had our employees, when they were in a home on a service call, customer service rep got into a home because there was a rusty water complaint, or there was a concern about, they wanted a sample taken, or something like that, we would also change the meter. So we weren't paying for it twice. If we're in the home, we're going to change the meter. So one of the things that we think we could do to drop that $2.4 million down to maybe just about 1.2, 1.4, would be over time to convert those meters and have staff do it.
So there's another item on there. It says squat tie-ins. That's your SCADA system. So you have a remote-controlled SCADA system that allows you to dispatch the wells in the system, do that from a central location, look at it on a computer in a remote location. We have the same thing at the Water Authority for 250 wellfields, but what we would need to do is to tie in those two systems.
So they could talk to each other?
So we would put in antennas, and we would put in computers at each one of your wellfields, and that would allow it to interface with our system. So that's what that adds.
So if there's a pressure drop or something, you'd be able to see it-
We would know about it.
From West Hampton or-
You know, you might say, "Well, what are you going to do in the interim?" In the interim, during when the agreement is first started, what we will do is we will basically take your SCADA system and we'll replicate it back in our Bay Shore office. So we'll have our system up, and we'll have your system right next to it, and we'll start working on the tie-ins right away. But in the early days of running the systems, we'll consider you to use your SCADA system to run it.
Can I just go back to the water meters? So having these automated water readers, obviously, it's going to reduce staff time. Is it, is somebody just basically drives down the street? They don't have to come out to your property anymore?
Correct, correct.
So it's less invasive, in a way?
Yeah, it's, everything from needing access to a home or access to the property to get the read on a quarterly basis. We bill quarterly. At one point there, we had 44 or 48 meter readers. This is going back 10 years. Through attrition, you know, no one was terminated. But using technology, as people bid, out, retired, and all that stuff, that number went down to now we have about eight or so. And long-term, and what they do is drive in the car, pick through the different billing cycles, go to a particular area, and collect reads. The tremendous benefit for the customer is that they're no longer getting an estimate. So instead of getting an estimate, you know, two quarters out of the four billing quarters, you know how much water you actually use. Customer complaints have dropped. It's really been a worthwhile initiative.
It's more accurate as well as-
Absolutely.
Less bothersome, I guess.
Absolutely. Yep.
And we average about 5,000 reads a day per employee now. So we would pretty much read the Hampton Bays Water District every day.
It is, though, the number you have here is, the 2.4 million is a lot. It's like over $300 a household. So, but if you do it the other way, though, I guess it becomes a-
Well, it just makes perfect sense because, you know, there are times when, if you're in a customer's home, you know, while you're there, you want to try to resolve as many potential issues as possible. And that changing out the meter, which is a relatively, you know, simple task, not very time-consuming, if there are no, you know, tremendous complications, that's something that we should do. We think it'll be helpful to us and to the customers. But I think that, even if it's done with, with staff, existing staff and not a contractor, that's something that could happen over, you know, three to five-year period.
So how are those networked in? I mean, do you-
They're not.
So you need to, you need to establish in the, in those particular neighborhoods, you need to be able to transmit that. I mean, there's, obviously, there's a range issue.
Well, it's collected. So the information is collected by the device in the vehicle and then put into our master system back in our quorum, customer service head.
Okay, but how close is that?
There's no backbone.
How close is, oh, there is.
There's no wireless backbone. It's just driving down the street, talks directly to the meter.
Oh, now I see why you're smart.
Yeah, you can read a meter that's on another block. The range, that's why they get 5,000 in one day, basically drive down. They wouldn't even have to drive on all the streets in Hampton Bays. They'll drive on maybe every other one, and they'll pick up the meters that are-
The driver actually has, you know, sort of a laptop up and has, you know, the streets in front, a map of the streets in front of them with the different accounts. And as they drive by, they'll light up.
He's missed anyone he can tell.
Absolutely. And, you know, there are, at times, there have been issues where there's a missed read, where there's some construction or planting, or, you know, something has covered the meter and the signal, and we have to do, you know, some tremendous efforts to try to find out what the problem is and get that read. But that number, where years ago, you know, customers of, you know, the Water Authority and other water districts would get, you know, what was our read rated? I'm not sure. I'm not sure if you know, Tim, off the top of your head or Joe, but it was seventy percent, sixty percent?
Between seventy and eighty percent.
Okay. Now, it's ninety-nine point nine percent.
Right. So, we could potentially parse out the Hampton Bay's Water District, uh, the readings, the amount of water that's being used by residential and commercial and then compare it to the amount of water that's being pumped.
Correct.
It should be right, it should be the same barring any break or...
Yep. There, there is, you know, every system has water loss, right? And there is, as I mentioned, like the flushing pro, program to sort of, you know, clean the system out of sediment, but that's all factored in.
But it definitely allows you to do much better calculation of...
And much better analysis of where there is loss.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, particularly when you, you must anticipate that, that there will be some, some regulations that will come forward to restrict water usage, all right? So, we have, you know, it's been talked about at the county level for some time. I don't know how, how real that would be, but that's, that's, uh...
And one of the first things is to get a handle on your water loss.
On what it is, yeah.
You spend a lot of time on our water loss.
The same problem we have with energy, so I, I get it, it's, you know, cool.
Um, the next item is a GAC building at plant number one. So, you just install that GAC filter for PFOS and PFOA. The way it's designed and constructed right now, you're going to have to shut the well field down in the wintertime to avoid freezing, or you're going to have to insulate everything that's on it. Typically, people shut them down. Uh, that gives you less flexibility because now that well field is not available for use if you need it. Uh, that might mean that you have to run plant number four more frequently with the rusty water. So, in order to have a little bit more flexibility and diversity, the best thing to do is cover over the GAC filter, be able to run that well whenever you want to run it. And then you can choose which wells got the best water quality and those are the ones that you've, uh, run during the, uh, during the washes.
And that may likely be the best water quality, the one that goes through the activated charcoal filtration.
Well, they're going through carbon now, so you've got carbon filtered water, so...
May be the best water to deliver.
It may turn out that it's the best water in the district, right?
So...
Uh, there's an item there for adding sample stations. So, this is the Water Authority's, um, mechanism for taking distribution water quality samples. We do not, we used to go into firehouses and libraries and restaurants and take samples. But we found that there's a problem with that because of the sanitary nature of someone's tap that we have no control over. So, it may lead to getting bad samples, uh, you know, that are not indicative of the water quality in the distribution system. So, to take that variability out of it, the Water Authority now installs small sample stations. They're probably about two feet high, they're a little green box. They're set off the side of the road in a safe location. They're locked and there's a little faucet in there. And that allows our laboratory personnel that drive around and take samples all day to stop, take a sample there. And we have a pretty good track record with those kind of samples that we don't have to worry about contamination from anything that was going on inside a house or a building. Uh, so there are sample stations. We control them, we maintain them. Uh, and it's really the preferable way to be able to adequately sample the system.
And that would pinpoint where there may be a problem also, whether it's from the, um, the tank to that spot or from that spot to the home or business.
Right, you, and they have to be strategically located. So, we look very carefully at where they are. You wouldn't put one right outside a pump station because you're sampling the water in the pump stations all the time. So, they need to be, we, we have to go through them with the health department where the locations all are to agree that those are the right locations. Uh, compliance analyzers, I put this in here to just highlight that you folks use the same analyzers that we use for, uh, chlorine and pH analyzer for compliance with those regulations.
Okay.
So, we don't need to do anything to comply with that. A lot of times we'll take over a water system or get involved with an operating agreement and people don't have any type of analyzers. You have them, so that's, that's the good news, so there's no cost issue. Um, we have an item here to add a backup. So, you have a high zone. It's a higher elevation zone. It's a boosted zone for people that live, uh, above your normal low elevation people. And right now, basically you're relying on the boosters, uh, their operation to maintain pressure in that zone. And what we like to do is when we have something like that, we like to have an alternative source of water into a boosted zone like that. So, what we would do is we would add a backup valve interconnection with your low zone that would automatically open should the pressure in that low zone fall precipitously, maybe because the boosters failed. Uh, and what that would do is that would open up the low zone to those folks. They'd still have lower pressure. They wouldn't have the pressure they have with the boosters, but they would have some pressure. And maintaining pressure in a water system is of utmost paramount importance. So, this just provides a backup that we think is money well spent. Then we also added a generator because, once again, those boosters, right now, they sit there and if they lost power, there's no power to provide, uh, boosted water to that zone. We would put a booster in there, uh, we'd put a generator in there to back up the boosters so that there is a, uh, reliable source of electricity, the power that booster system. We just, that, that's consistent with our design philosophy in the Water Authority.
So, if there's power outage, you could maintain pressure.
Right, right. And going along with the same thing, we felt that at plant three, we would also want to put in automatic generator. You folks have what are called angle drives, which rely on somebody to go out, start the engine, throw a transmission lever to run the well off of a mechanical, off of an engine. Uh, we rely on automatic generators that when the lights go out, the generator automatically comes on. A transfer switch throws over the electric power from Leipa or PSENG over to the generator. And we don't even dispatch anybody there. We get an alarm in our control system that says the generator is running at Hampton Bay's plant number one. But when we look at it, we see everything is running properly, we don't have to dispatch anybody for that. So, we would like to have, uh, that additional generator in your system to bring your system up to the level of backup standby power that we have in the rest of our system, uh, which is about forty percent of backed up, of our wells are backed up by, uh, backup power. And we found that that allows us to provide water through just about every scenario. So, through Hurricane Sandy, through the big blackout, uh, we still provided water to everybody with only forty percent of our wells being backed up with generators. But there are reasons for that. When the lights go out, people can't run irrigation systems because the solar lights don't open.
Right, so the forty percent is enough. It's, it's a lot better than, you know, not having any water, so...
We have about a hundred and forty generators, uh, in our fleet of generators.
There's a, there's a big, huge inertia problem, right? It just, you lose power, you lose pressure, then you have to start it up again.
You don't want to do that.
Wow, it's kind of hard to imagine how much, hmm, just like...
We, we don't want to depressurize the system. The health department doesn't want us to depressurize the system because if you have any leaks of any kind, that's when something can get into the water system. So, one of the best preventions of any kind of contamination is to keep the system pressurized. Uh, we also, in our discussions with staff, found that, uh, well number one, that plant number one needs a, uh, recondition and the pump needs to be replaced. So, we put money in there for doing that. We recondition and replace pumps on wells constantly. You know, I have a staff of two mechanical engineers that just basically spend their time on pump maintenance. So, this would be pretty much routine, uh, type of, uh...
We replaced it, I thought we just replaced the pump there, but was it in well one one or one three?
No, well, one and one three both.
All right, so, yeah, so you won't have to do that. Then maybe since you looked at it, we may have swapped that one out, right? We were waiting, I think, right? And we fi, came in?
Yeah, well, the problem, uh, after the reconditioning, the well one one was breaking suction. So, we're not allowed, like, we're able to pump the gallons that we want to get out of it.
Oh, so you, then we would need to...
So, you need to replace the one one?
So, so the reconditioning, what Vinnie's talking about is because the well is now clogged up down below.
Okay.
Uh, and so, it's not giving out enough water. And when it breaks suction, that because when you're pumping water out, it, the level goes down below the pump. And now you're not pumping any water, you're pumping air.
So, that still isn't needed then?
So, that still needs to be done. So, it's a reconditioning and a replacement of the pump. They recondition the well, they pull the pump out, they go down and they brush the screen, maybe put some acid down there to open up the formation. Uh, and that's a reconditioning of the well. And we do those on a regular basis.
Sure.
And then I have this in here, the one point five million dollar estimate. I spoke with John Collins about what he expected. The one point five is probably a conservative estimate. We talked about maybe using plastic or PVC pipe to get the number down below a million. Uh, it's subject to competitive bidding and what the market is like at the time, but, uh, one point five...
I know that the, the district has sort of promised, um, the installer or the supplier who gave us the line under Shinnecock Bay to give us steel at cost.
I heard something about that.
But, but I still don't know if steel is the right material there for a couple of reasons. One is because you have a rising water table that's constantly then exposing it to salt water and then oxygen. So, you could potentially have, um, oxidation rust there.
Absolutely, yeah.
So...
It seems like a, it's a little brainer that it would be PVC.
As long as the analysis was done as to what the best material for that location is, it's kind of an unusual spot along Dun Rose.
But also, right now, we're, I seem to understand that we're doing okay with that, what, the, the current repair.
Uh, again, talking to Vinnie and the staff, uh, they explained to me what was wrong and that when the contractor came back to do the repair of that joint that was leaking, he not only did that, but he restrained the rest of the pipe that hadn't been done when it was originally...
It should be good for another forty years.
Well, you know what? It's the kind of thing, maybe it'll last forty years, you know? And maybe it's the kind of thing where...
There's issues though with that approach to begin with.
What's that?
Well, there's issues. They have to keep that section running constantly through the winter. It's just dripping basically at the end.
It's something that's exposed, right, on the shore there?
Some of it's exposed.
To prevent it from freezing, right?
Yeah. I mean, I, I don't know if that could be covered or heated, but...
It might be something that we would look at. You know, and it might be the, the kind of thing where we would have a diver go down and look at it every couple of years to, to verify the integrity of it. And maybe we'll keep a track of it and see what's going on with it. But that, that's the kind of thing where, you know, you, you want to be careful how you spend your money, obviously. You don't want to put it in a place where this pipe is going to be good for forty years. I mean, it's relatively new, so it really should, it should last a little bit.
All right, good. So, and then, uh, so, now, can I ask one on, on the infrastructure capital? You didn't mention anything about any additional interconnects or modifying any of the interconnects. Because some of the interconnects are one-way right now.
Yeah.
Um, and, and they're manual.
Yep.
No, I know with, I think the one by Shinnecock Canal is being swapped out with an automated connect.
As part of the canoe place.
As part of the canoe place. But it's still, I don't know if it's a two-way valve or one-way valve. Is that something you guys have looked at? There's three, total of three interconnects, is that right?
There are actually four. There's, uh, there're two on the east side, there's one on Old Country Road on the west side. But there's also a check valve up in Lloyd Drive that brings our intermediate zone down into your system. Um, you know, I didn't put anything there for the interconnects because one was the canoe place development. I'm not sure if that's going to happen or if that's going to be paid for with that.
It's going to happen, better happen.
These are, the, the piping is already there. So, it's really a matter of the valve itself and how that gets configured or reconfigured to allow for the free flow of water. I still don't know how our systems are going to behave when we open the valves and, and we actually make the connections. So, it's, it's not a lot of money to convert a valve from being either a manual valve or a...
Because I, you know, I think one of the, one of the selling points of this is the availability of water on both sides of Hampton Bays to deal with pressure issues or water quality issues. Right now, some of those valves, I think, are one-way. I don't know and maybe they need to be modified.
Yep. So, that's, that's going to be the thing. When we initially take over the system, we're going to run your system. We're going to understand how the pressures vary, what the pressures are like in the system. And then we'll probably open up, uh, probably to Southampton first. Uh, I think over the summer, we had some experience with that because we supplied you on the east side of the canal through our Southampton system to get you through the PFOS problem. Uh, so that might make sense to do that. Ultimately, I'd like to see both sides opened up. You know, your tanks are at a hundred and ninety feet and a hundred and eighty feet or a hundred and seventy-nine feet. Our tank in Southampton is at a hundred and eighty feet. And our tanks in, uh, the west side are at like a hundred and seventy-five feet. But then we have a couple of a hundred and ninety-foot tanks too there. So, it's all hydri, uh, hydraulics. You can have tanks at different elevations. Uh, we have that in our system all over the place. You just have to run your pumps to adjust for that. So, you may have to artificially elevate the pressure in one area by running a, a pump station to accommodate, uh, you know, prevent water from running from one to another. Uh, it's, it's something that we have to, we got to play with a little bit. Basically, open the systems up, see how they perform. Uh, but ultimately, my goal would be to have the two systems opened up on both sides.
So, okay.
So that we have full reliability.
So, moving beyond capital, so in, in, Jeff, maybe the one...
I did have a question about one.
Oh, on capi, okay, good.
Sure. Um, I, in Hampton Bays, I, I'm pretty sure that most people are connected to the water system. However, not everyone is. If there were owners who wanted to connect to the system, would this, if we decide to do this, would this be a good time to do it? What's your policy for new connects?
So...
Or what would be the policy?
Let the attorney talk, I don't think...
He hasn't said much.
What we would do is we would hook them up in accordance with our rules and regulations. Essentially, it's a eighteen hundred and fifty dollar, uh, tapping fee that they would be charged. Uh, they would be responsible for putting in their own private service line from the edge of the street to their property.
Okay.
So, I don't think there'd be any advantage to doing it now, you know, before the, before the, well...
Unless the fee is significantly different.
Unless your fee is cheaper right now than somebody would...
But that hasn't changed since you, you started the Suffolk County Water Authority. When the original program for people to opt in or opt out, they had to pay for that connection.
They would have to pay the tapping fee.
Right.
There aren't very many. There's just a handful of private wells. But Vinnie, do, what's our tapping fee?
Twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred, what's yours again?
Eighteen fifty.
Eighteen fifty, so there's a little bit less.
There's seventeen houses that are, we're not connected in our district, we're... God, I signed up through my research for the pool with PFOS.
Right.
And we're trying to figure out what direction it was headed, so you can notify those people to hook up. And boards, the county board of health, they notified the people, attempted to board, but notified the people. But they were not letting you notify all of them.
Has any of them hooked up?
Nope.
Nobody chose to hook up? But their water's been tested?
Yep, they offered to test it too.
Okay.
Is that residential consumption or is it, or some of those for, for commercial use? It's all residential?
Yep, seventeen houses.
Uh, so...
Thank you.
And it, it's all portable, right? It's not just irrigation wells, it's...
No, the irrigation wells totally suffered from, from, uh, whole wells.
So, Jeff, I wanted to go, you know, move a little bit from capital and talk about sort of like motivation here. Because you didn't ask us for this, we asked you. I mean, we asked you to take a look at our district. Um, what's in it for Suffolk County Water Authority to have Hampton Bays? Why would you guys be interested in it? I, I'm really getting down to like the mission of Suffolk County Water Authority.
That, that's my answer. Our mission, uh, is to supply safe, potable drinking water to the residents of Suffolk County. Uh, our service territory covers, uh, every, uh, square inch of Suffolk County that hasn't already been identified as part of a district, right? Um, we take a lot of pride in what we do. We're, we're, we're a group of serious professionals. And we think that we have a service here that certainly could provide some of the, you know, highest quality drinking water to the residents of Hampton Bays. We respect their staff. We know that they've done a very good job. But our philosophy is if the town approaches us and thinks that we can do it better, we'll gladly help out.
Jeff, you're not like an Exxon or, you're not a private for-profit utility.
Correct.
You guys are a not-for-profit. Can you talk a little bit about what that, like, what is the structure of Suffolk County Water Authority? How are you overseeing, you know, nobody's going to make a profit by adding Hampton Bays. Nobody's going to be richer because Hampton Bays is part of Suffolk County Water.
Correct. If, there's no financial incentive for the Water Authority to operate the Hampton Bays Water District. Our average customers pay about a four hundred dollars a year, right, to the Water Authority for consumption of water. You know, just figure it out. Four hundred times sixty-four hundred, you know, every year. That, that's not a tremendous windfall for anybody, considering, you know, looking at the financial, the capital work that needs to get done. But we take our mission seriously. We are, we're, we're not subject to the Public Service Commission, so there isn't that sort of oversight. But we certainly abide by New York State Public Authority's law. There is oversight by their state health department, by their Suffolk County Health Department. Our board, excuse me, we have five board members that are, there's one appointed every year to a five-year term. And they are appointed by the legislature, and they empower myself and I empower the staff to make sure that we provide that safe drinking water.
So now, if I put my head in kind of the mindset of a Hampton Bays water consumer, so. I mean, I would think the most important thing to me is the confidence that the water I'm drinking, my tap water, is safe. But then, you know, also the cost, like what am I going to be paying for it? So your proposal is basically saying that you're going to provide a higher quality of oversight in water quality, not increase the cost to the payer, and provide like six million, six point one million in initial capital. How is that possible that you could provide better water at the same price and still invest six million dollars in? How does that add up?
Well, I do want to point out, before I get to that question, if we do enter into an agreement, I think it would be beneficial for the town board and for the residents of Hampton Bays Water District and the town of Southampton, if we supply the town with a quarterly update, a quarterly report, indicating everything from water quality to main breaks, to customer service inquiries, just so that the board has a comfort level that we are responding, we're doing everything that, you know, the customer's needs. We, that information is available. Other towns over the years have not requested it. But I think in this particular case, we'll be, I'll be happy to come here with the staff once a quarter to brief the board on what's happening. So just, you know, getting back to your initial question.
Sort of the economy of scale question. So how is it that you guys can do this for less than.
It's what.
The economy of scale is the answer.
It's our size, it's our expertise. Without a doubt, we strongly believe that we will be able to hold, you know, the customers' rates to where they are now, approximately, right? That power to make that determination will be with the town board. The town board will continue to set rates. The Water Authority will be paid a management fee from the town to operate the district. However, you decide to establish rates, that's up to the elected officials. The benefits are our ability to move quickly, our ability to, we're at the forefront of the industry. You know, we're not just another water authority. Nationally, we are one of the leaders in the United States of America providing safe, potable drinking water. And you have the expertise. I have a laboratory staff of forty chemists. I have an engineering staff with numerous PE, so we're able to draw on that. You're not calling a consulting consultant and hoping for a callback in, you know, three to five days. We're there. We have the knowledge to get the job done.
And you're spreading your capital costs over a much larger.
Yes.
Much larger base, yes.
Much larger base.
And these projects, while, you know, for you folks, it's a big deal, putting in an eye-removal system, it's a big deal, you know, like.
No, if we had absorbed six million dollars in capital in the next three years and just charged the taxpayers in Hampton Bays worth, that's a big hit.
So you're serving one.
I couldn't promise that rates wouldn't go up or taxes wouldn't go up to cover that capital.
But by the same token, if they're, if they're doing other capital improvements in other areas that are significant, then they're going to be borne by our residents, which is what we, you know, here is the plus and the minus. It's just, you know, double-edged sword. But do you have any known or probable large ticket items like that that potentially would affect our district payers?
You mean, large ticket items in the rest of our system?
Yeah, that would ultimately affect them.
No, I mean, the largest ticket item may be the specter of advanced oxidation and one-four dioxide treatment, you know, one of these compounds that may become regulated, that the entire industry is worried about. So that's a possibility.
So it's not something that we wouldn't have to do anyway?
Are you guys still sitting on that hundred million dollar MTV settlement, or is that gone?
Well, provided, do you want to talk about that, Tim? We should point out, you may want to talk briefly about the other pending litigation related to.
Yeah, I actually was going to go there next, because we also have filed notice against the manufacturers of PFOS and PFOSI. And I, and I did, I want to have a better understanding within our contract as if there is a significant award, where that money's going to go, so.
Well, just quickly, I just, you know, for the public's edification, you know, the difference between sixty-four hundred customers and one point two million customers that you serve, there's the economy of scale. So if you have, if you have a large project, the amount of that project that's borne by sixty-four hundred is minuscule in comparison to one point two.
Well, and shouldn't you have some numbers somewhere that we can see where you did a big, huge project and how much it may have impacted all of your rate payers?
Well, that's, Beth, you may want to answer this.
Well, as far as our rates and our rate payers are concerned, every five years, the Water Authority does reach out to consultants to comment and review all of the books and all of the expenses. And for the longest time, it was a zero percent rate increase, and it's only recently it's been about four percent.
Every five years?
They recommended seven percent, but the board members have chosen to go with four percent with other abilities to bring in revenue.
But we would be setting the rates under the.
You would be setting the rates for the Hampton Bays Water District. We would be billing the town.
What if we are setting rates lower than what?
So part of the agreement is that you have to set rates that are adequate to pay for the management fee. And so when you look at the agreement, what we did is we put in a certain amount of money that we're going to pay cash. And that will serve as a rate stabilization fund for the first several years.
In addition to the six point one?
Yes. So there's six point one million worth of capital improvements. And there's, I can't remember the figure exactly, but it's.
One point two.
One point six million dollars rate stabilization fund that the Water District will be able to draw off to stabilize rates over at least the first five years. And what will happen after that period of time is the bond issues that are currently out there on behalf of the district will be starting to be paid off. So as that fund that we're putting up in front is drawn down, the.
District debt.
Debt service.
The district debt service will be going away.
Maybe I could help. So there's some outstanding debt. It's almost like a five or six million dollar debt, was it?
Four point four.
Four point four?
It's about four point four.
All right. So the district will continue to pay the outstanding debt on the current infrastructure. However, we're going to keep all the cell tower revenues, which is going to pay most, a good portion of it.
In perpetuity?
And, yes, in perpetuity.
So I don't read that in here. It's only until they expire.
No, we keep it after.
Until they expire. The contract says until they expire.
Till they, till those contracts. So we're going to continue, we're going to get that revenue, and we're going to get the one point six. Those two together will take care of the debt service. So without having to go to the taxpayers for it.
And Len, you have the information on when those cell tower leases come up?
And again, just for like the board's clarification too, so right now, the cost of operating the district is paid for in two different ways. It's paid for in a tax bill and it's paid for in a per gallon fee. The typical Suffolk County Water Authority, you know, structure is just the, you know, the water bill. It's just a gallonage fee and I guess a service hook-up fee, an annual type of fee. And there's also typically a hydrant, per hydrant fee. So we've kind of rolling it all into one. We're going to have, the basis for their charges are based on what the consumption is at their gallonage fee, plus the hydrants adds up to what they would typically get. They're still going to get that, but they'll get it by a blended, we're going to give it to them through a rate per gallon plus the property taxes. And right now, our calculation is that if they stay right where they are, the property taxes and the per gallon, that'll be enough to cover all of their costs.
So people's bills that they're paying now, plus the portion on their property tax, on their tax bill.
Be the same.
Will be similar.
Will be the same, and we'll get all the infrastructure modernized.
For how long, a period of time approximately?
So as long as, for the forty years that there, you know, that this period runs, it would cover the, is that, I'm not sure I'm answering your question.
Yeah, I mean.
If we get, if we decide to cancel it, then we, you know, let's say they've invested six million or ten million into the infrastructure in Hampton Bays, whatever is outstanding on that, we have to, we're going to have to bond and take over that debt now.
But you're saying the tax bills, as they exist now, would ostensibly be the same for the next forty years?
Well, not necessarily exactly what they are now.
That's what I'm trying, that's what I'm trying to say.
If their management costs go up, it's possible that the rates could go up. I would anticipate they'd be.
Well, they're going to trend, like, well.
Like two percent a year, just to keep up with costs.
Every year, they trend up.
Well, they're saying they, perhaps every five years, they look at the, and it went up seven percent, and they, right.
There'll be cost increases like everything else.
And what about the management costs? What do you expect those to trend up?
So what happens is annually, we usually have a rate increase.
Like two percent?
Well, just to clarify, so every five years, we hire a consultant to do a.
Rate study.
An analysis, a rate study, right? We're three years in to the existing rate study. But annually, we hold a public hearing, and we have meetings with our board. And we discuss, you know, how did we do this year? Where was consumption? Where were we with capital projects? Were there any significant changes with obligations related to New York State retirement or healthcare costs, or something that may have been higher than projected? So each year, we have this public meeting, and we present to the board a recommendation on what the rate should be. Over the last ten years or so, that rate has averaged probably about three and a half, four percent. On average, a couple of years ago, it was one percent. Last year, I think it was four, four point two percent.
Part of your mission is to keep that rate down.
Absolutely.
So the things that could spike the rate could, less likely to be employee benefits, more likely to be capital costs, right?
Correct.
And we could have that now in the Hampton Bays Water District if we had to suddenly spend five million or ten million dollars. But here, the capital costs are spread out over a much larger pool. So in a sense, it's less likely to see rate spikes than the current scenario.
But the management fee you're saying is around two, a two percent increase?
The management fee will be, go up by the percentage of rate increase that we have. So if, what the district will be able to do is, what they should do is probably have an annual rate increase in what they would charge their customers. And what will happen is as you pay off your debt, you may want to look at increasing the rate. And so that it will be a smooth transition as, so for example, in Brentwood, what they did is they increased their rates so that at a certain period of time, they made their rates exactly like ours as their debt was paid off. So they had a smooth transition, and now they don't have any debt, and they just charge the rate that we charge.
Which increases year over year.
You're sort of quasi-governmental. Your structure is quasi-governmental. So you have an appointed board of directors.
Correct.
By the Suffolk County Legislature.
That's correct. Then we, you know, we have public meetings. We have an annual board meeting, I mean, I'm sorry, a monthly board meeting that's open to the public. We typically don't get tremendous turnout unless there's a water quality issue or a concern about a particular project or a complaint. But our, all of our information is accessible and available on our website. We try to be transparent as possible.
Here's a question for you. I know the answer, but, so do we have East End representation on the board of directors?
We have Tim Bishop. Tim Bishop is our most recent board member, and I think he has another two years on his term. He's been a fantastic addition. He's been great.
Yeah. So that's a good thing.
Absolutely.
For a long time, we didn't have any East End person.
Sort of like our planning commission.
That's good. I wish we could somehow mandate that at least one member of the board.
Regions or towns or regions or.
Yeah. I'll have to get legislative Fleming to push that.
I do want to thank, and I know you may have other questions, but throughout the last several months, I want to in particular thank, you know, Jim Burke, Frank Zarpone, and Lenny Marchese, along with the supervisor and the council members for approaching us, but also for being available and for sharing information. This is, it's been a, it's been a very interesting experience, but also, I think, a very good, positive collaboration to get to where we are today.
So in terms of moving forward, I don't know, you guys are prepared. You guys could mobilize quickly if we give the go-ahead. But, you know, I think that the board would be very interested in hearing from the Hampton Bays community. And would you be willing to do a public information meeting, perhaps two, in the Hampton Bays community?
Absolutely.
It's hard to get everybody, why a night meeting?
Absolutely.
Because everybody's over there is working.
Yeah.
So what I'd like to then do, and I don't know, we have, we do have two members of our Water District. I don't know if you guys had any questions or wanted to make any comments or statements.
I just had a couple.
Questions? Lauren, do you want to come forward?
Just real quick.
You know, maybe we can answer these questions now, and then I would like to try to set a date for one, if not both. One toward maybe late November and another in mid-December, if that's possible.
Yeah, we're looking forward to it.
Okay.
Just real quick, would your, would your employment, you say there's an opportunity for advancement, which is fine. But how does that work, being that the Hampton Bays Water District will be the lowest men in the total? How is, how do you, how do you rectify, how can you justify that?
Those are union issues. We can't really talk about that right now. We're getting.
I can tell you what the process is.
From the guy in the back.
I'd rather not.
All right, what's the, what's the other question?
We'll get you the answers, but.
The other thing was just about the water meters and how they read them with the snow. Do you guys, do they get estimates? Or do the meters work in snows?
At the beginning.
Typically, snow is not a factor. To get the read, it's more of a, maybe an issue depending on the severity of the storm and getting the car out, you know, making sure it's safe to get to the neighborhood, but just that accumulation of snow doesn't affect the read. Okay, and the only, the only question, last question I have, and you can tell me if I can't get an answer now, is, is just say, for instance, somewhere down the line, okay, you said that basically most customers are four hundred dollars a year. Okay, so that actually comes out to a hundred dollars a quarter. How do you justify explaining to a customer that pays twenty-five dollars a quarter that they're going to end up having to pay a hundred dollars a quarter?
Well, that's an average, first of all.
I'm just, I'm just going by what your numbers are, what you're saying. You know what I mean? Because you're going to have people in Hampton Bays that'll go, wait a second. I'm paying twenty-five dollars a quarter.
Well, they think they are. They're not looking at the property tax bill.
No, they're not. And I agree with, that's, yeah.
Right, so I mean, we, we as a board, and we could say, all right, you know what? We're going to eliminate the property taxes altogether, and we're just going to do a per gallonage, you know? And then people, you know, they pay for what they use. That's another way to structure it. I'm trying to have as little moving parts as possible. People are used to paying the property taxes.
Easy as possible.
There may be some advantages to property taxes, though we're losing, we're capping state local tax deductions. But sometimes having something in your property tax bill is a better way to pay for it. But anyway, that's something the board, I think, will have to figure out. But I think that it's, it's not really fair to say that you have a person paying twenty-five dollars a quarter. That's not their full charge. Their full charge is the property tax plus that.
Plus that.
But also, it is important to make the average there.
Right.
You know, that it is an average. So somebody who's paying less, under that hundred-dollar mark per quarter, there are people paying more.
There are people, right.
Right? And so you have that. That's the reason.
That person who's paying twenty-five a quarter will continue, will likely continue to pay twenty-five dollars.
They'll pay a low rate. I mean, they're going to be, we have plenty of customers that use very little water. Some of our closest employees.
We're not proposing, we.
Small bills.
The town isn't proposing to change the gallonage price, which is right now less than Suffolk County Water Authority because we have the property tax component. So they should, and it should not be affected by it.
No, but, well, I'm just trying to get some kind of perspective on this because you know that people come to us and say, well, what's the benefit, what this, that, and the whole thing. We'd like to just be able to answer them somehow.
Sure.
And just, you know, try to put their mind at ease a little bit. That's all.
I think we're going to develop a fact sheet. Once, if we choose to go forward, we'll have an information.
Len, I'm not sure we're getting you on the recording, and I know this is an issue that a lot of people are interested. So why don't you, you could come up.
Once we.
This is Len Marchese, our controller.
Once we actually enter into an agreement, we'll prepare a fact sheet that will be able to, we're going to do a mailing to all the residents, first of all, and we'll do probably multiple mailings. In addition to that, we'll provide our staff with more detail, but the same content, basically, of what all the, you know, the Q and A's, you know, what will be the main questions? And we'll, we'll address all those topics so that everybody's on the same page. This is, you know, a full, transparent decision, and it'll be full transparency in terms of how we go through the process. So there'll be.
No, that's fine, but I'm just saying, as a.
No, the quicker we can get to.
We're getting questions now.
I can't answer those questions because we haven't finalized the. We don't have all the answers in the word. Once we finalize the agreement, then we can give you the answers. That's the reason why we have.
I'm good with that. I mean, I just.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just trying to make people more comfortable. That's all.
That's the only reason we haven't given it out yet. That's all.
Can I, can I, before we go into setting a meeting date, Jeff, and maybe this isn't for today, but the other assets of the district in terms that there's trucks, there's buildings, there's equipments, computers.
I would think that we would be very open to, for a short period of time, determined by the town board and the Water Authority jointly, I don't know if that's six months or a year or a year and a half, keep the office open, the existing Hampton Bays office, for as a customer service sort of satellite office.
Sure.
I think that that sort of continuity, I'm not sure how often residents come to that office. Okay, so we would very much be open to that. We understand, we want to make this as easy as possible. We want the residents to feel as comfortable as possible. As far as use of vehicles and equipment, we had, we've had those discussions with our fleet manager and our asset management folks, and we just don't, we think we're okay. We don't think that we need the vehicles or the backhoes or anything else.
Okay, just one other question about fire hydrants. I know that's built into the pricing. But do you guys shovel out the hydrants? Is that part of your maintenance in the winter?
No, no, that is.
It might be something that the Water District does. I don't know. If you had a fire, so obviously, if a hydrant, you can't see the hydrant, it's not good for the fire department because it's covered in snow, so.
Well, we've been very, and that is a very common sort of misconception with the public during the winter season, with the assumption that the Water Authority staff will go around and shovel out, you know, we have forty-seven thousand hydrants throughout our distribution area, so it's just not, it's not possible. So we, we've been very aggressive with public notification and press releases, encouraging residents, if there's a hydrant in front of your home or in front of your store, to shovel it out. We have also started a program just a couple of years ago where we. We have also started a program just a couple of years ago where we flag hydrants so that they're visible to trucks plowing and other vehicles that may hit them during storms so that people know there is a hydrant here, also if there's an emergency, they know and there may be some storm coverage or some snow on them, that there is a hydrant available.
So what is that fee, the hydrant fee for then, that you guys collect?
Well, the, a hydrant, right, it's a one hundred and sixty dollars annually, that is to inspect and to maintain, for proper maintenance, so that that hydrant works when needed.
Okay, all right. So the last thing I wanna talk about, this is before we set the meeting, is the issue of the litigation. So we, we do have a suit that we're filing on behalf of the Hampton Bays Water District. We did this with MTBE, it might have been rolled into a class action, I don't remember the details. We did get about a, a million dollars from the MTBE settlement. You guys got a hundred million, it's a much bigger district. We have spent that money at this point on putting in filters to deal with our PFOS issue. So now we're, you know, trying to go after the manufacturers of PFOS and PFOA. I don't know where that will lead, but how, I noticed something in the contract referring to this issue, and maybe this is a question for the lawyer, but it's, it's our aquifer, it's been compromised, and we'd like to see it cleaned up ultimately, but if we are successful, if we do prevail in litigation, how, where do those revenues go?
So, I'm trying to find where.
Five point four.
Five point four.
And we'd also like perhaps consent on any of the settlement.
We still own the district.
Essentially, we get our pro-rata share of the settlement.
And if you're not comfortable talking about it at the, this moment, we could talk about it.
Well, this is, litigation would be an executive session type of issue.
Yeah, negotiation of the contract.
I'm fine with just not discussing it at this moment, we'll talk about it in private because we are gonna go into executive session, but that is, that is an issue potentially to try to resolve. Okay, so let's see if we can set a date, and I'll need some help with the calendar here, cause we're up against Thanksgiving, we're up against Christmas and other holidays. I'm thinking late November, but maybe after Thanksgiving? Thanksgiving is the twenty-second.
You have the Thursday date in that week, Jay, November twenty-ninth? Did you want to do this?
We have a regular work session during the day, but how about a, a night meeting on the twenty-ninth? Would that, is that the day you're thinking?
Well, that's the Thursday of the week following Thanksgiving week.
Is that a date that's okay with the board? It works for me.
Not for me.
Not for you?
Not for me.
Okay.
Still have the meeting.
Well, what about Wednesday evening, the twenty-eighth?
The day, when is Thanksgiving?
The week before.
The week before.
Thanksgiving's the twenty-second.
Yeah, you would have to be.
Are you, are you out of count?
No, no, I.
It's just that one day?
And again, I would watch it.
I.
For the community, not necessarily.
I could make a night meeting on the twenty-eighth, it looks like. Is that a, a day that is good for everybody?
I'm okay both days, evening.
Not a good day.
We do have a Town Board meeting on the twenty-seventh, so. The, yeah, why, if the twenty-eighth, is, you guys okay with the twenty-eighth?
Excuse me, my schedule, the twenty-eighth looks okay. I would likely to any public meeting, make sure that we have our operations folks, finance, maybe even my Director of Laboratory Services in case there are questions from the public, so.
Why don't you throw out a few dates and then we'll make it.
I'm thinking like a seven PM.
Twenty-eighth, I think should be good.
Yeah, your point's well taken, though, you know, the public would wanna hear from that as well as.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see a date before then where we could really provide adequate public notice, so, cause we're, we're talking about sending a mailer?
Yes, you would have need time to send the mailer and then of course you have the obstacle of a week of Thanksgiving, so it's take out of the.
And, you know, and I'd like to have this at our, you know, Community Center, we have a senior center.
Next week.
In Hampton, in Hampton Bays. I think that room is large enough, right? Do we, would we need to go to the school?
Might need to go to the school.
I was just gonna say, if I, I would probably rather go to the school.
Yeah, I think you're gonna need more room.
Than you would the nutrition center.
It's probably, yeah, probably more comfortable too, so.
You'd have to check the school calendar.
All right, so Frank will work on the location, we'll, possibly the school.
So we have a window and some opportunities for dates and let's.
All right, so, and then, how about a date mid-December?
In December, you have two possible Thursday dates, December.
Do you wanna do a Thursday again?
Doesn't have to be, I'm just picking Thursdays because there's a rhythm to meeting on Thursday, the Thursday, December thirteenth and Thursday, December twentieth. If you wanted to do, you have a Wednesday, December nineteenth, Wednesday, December twelfth. You do have a board meeting on December eleventh, and then of course, there's Christmas week toward the end, which would get in the way of anyone.
No, that's not gonna be conducive to public meetings.
If you do a November twenty-eighth meeting, two weeks later would put you in the week of December seventeenth, so the nineteenth or twentieth would be a two-week interval between meeting one and meeting two.
Yeah, I think we need at least two weeks, so we do have a work session on the twentieth, that's a Thursday, but.
Let's try and keep, I mean, cause you're entering into like Christmas Eve, you gotta start with the.
Is the twentieth too close to Christmas, or you wanna?
Like the eighteenth?
The eighteenth would be a Tuesday, we have.
Is it Tuesday?
Yeah, we don't have a Town Board meeting then, now you wanna, I like the eighteenth. I'm gonna go for the eighteenth, is that okay with everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Again, seven, seven PM? Is that a date that works for the Water Authority?
Right.
Um.
Look, both meetings are seven PM.
Frank, would you work with them to, on some informational mail or make sure everything is accurate?
Yeah, I spoke with Jeff and his staff earlier, we'll get something coming.
Okay, I, I know we may have, I think at this point, we, we may wanna have some conversations with CSCE as well, that all the employees right now are represented by that bargaining unit except for the administrative posts. They are likely to have some questions and concerns about, about this, so we'll have to start those conversations. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have you been able to, in the past, in similar situations where you've switched from one union to another, I, have you had situations like that?
Yes, when it's worked out, we've been able to reach agreements with the unions and we've absorbed employees.
Do you know whether they considered those impact bargaining or improper practices?
Not from our perspective, I'm not sure how the other districts handled it.
Okay, all right. All right, so I do wanna discuss some of this in executive session too, so and that was the last item. If you guys could bear with me, I wanna make a couple of announcements and then we'll adjourn to executive session. So one, just the board should be aware that we may have a nor'easter this weekend, it's not totally clear, but there is a storm heading our way, it may go off the sea, but as we know, we're particularly vulnerable to nor'easters, particularly from erosion, so just be mindful of that. We do have a housing lottery this afternoon at three PM. This is for Southampton Point, that new development on County Route thirty-nine, there's fifteen affordable homes, townhouses, features two bedrooms and one and a half baths for people earning eighty percent of median income, they'll be paying two hundred thirty-three thousand, three hundred seventy-five, those earning a hundred twenty percent of median income, three hundred fifty thousand, one hundred twenty-five. It's a beautiful facility, there's gonna be fifteen lucky winners. It's not the mega millions, but it's, it's a chance to live in this community at an affordable price and I think for those who win, it'll, it'll, it'll feel pretty exciting to win this. Now, what typically happens is we go, we don't just pick fifteen, we go all the way through the list, cause sometimes people who, who may be selected will not ultimately qualify for, for a loan or there may be other issues, they might opt not to purchase, so, but I do invite the board to come to that lottery, which will happen here at Town Hall. Do we know exactly, Frank, what, is that gonna be in the auditorium?
Yes.
It'll be in the auditorium of this building and it is at three PM today. There's also a ribbon cutting tomorrow at eleven AM for the Riverside Traffic Circle and I believe County Executive Bologna will be there.
I believe you said.
Oh, we cannot make it?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. We'll not be there, okay, thank you. But we are expecting Councilwoman Bridget Fleming, Senator Ken LaValle, some women from Front Field, members of the Riverhead Town Board, including Supervisor Laura Jen Smith, lots of members of the community, business community and the residential community, members for, representatives from Renaissance downtowns will be there. This traffic surface roundabout is a, sort of a long time in coming. When I first got to be Suffolk County Legislature, I was working with DPW on doing, you know, analyzing that circle, it was already failing from a traffic moving perspective and I was, ended up chairing the Legislative Committee, the Public Works Committee, worked on this for a number of years. Eventually, we got it funded, designed, and of course, I left the legislature, Legislator Fleming took over as legislator, continued to keep it funded and actually added to the funding some environmental improvements. It's been, I think, a year and a half under construction and it's looking great. I think it's, it's really, it's sort of, it's got interesting because it's, parts of it are two-lane, two-lane roundabout. We struggled initially because DPW, there's five roads that come together there. There's Route twenty-four comes in and out of there, you have Paconic Avenue, you're going over the, that's called the bridge to Riverhead, and then you have Riverlay and South Lake, I think it's called. Anyway, so you have all these roads that are meeting there and they wanted to eliminate one of the legs and the community did not want to eliminate one of the legs, so we had to kinda go back to the drawing board and figure out a way, and we ended up expanding the circle into an oval, two-lane oval, like a, like an egg, which is perfect because it's the area of the big duck, so you have eggs or something that is common, so, and, but they did, DPW did a phenomenal job on this project. The engineers are terrific and the contractor did a great job and plus there's a, a number of environmental features that will help attenuate road runoff, help with the Paconic estuary system. So if, you know, please be there if you can at the ribbon cutting, that again is eleven AM tomorrow. And lastly, Good Ground Park in Hampton Bays, there's a Halloween event this Saturday, wait, it's now changed to be at the Community Center, right, Connie? That's because of the storm, right? So it's gonna be at the Community Center on Ponquag Avenue because of rain. Oh, this is for Good Ground Park, right? Not gonna be at Good Ground Park, it's gonna be at the Community Center. It follows the Mark Sinclair walkabout on Main Street for trick-or-treaters, then they come to the Community Center twelve-thirty to two-thirty for arts and crafts, entertainment, including a musician, magician at one o'clock and a costume contest at two o'clock. And the Town Board, I guess apparently we are the judges, so some of us will need to be there. So do you need a time again? The judging, the contest judging is, costume contest judging is two o'clock. All right, any other business?
Yes, yesterday I attended the Long Island Clean Water Partnership Conference. A number of speakers from NASA and Suffolk County and two of the speakers were our very own Mary Wilson from CPF and Janice Shear from Long Range, they did a fine job and represented us well, and they spoke about our IA installation system that we know.
Any other updates or announcements?
Yeah, yesterday we had the anti, this is October's Anti-Bullying and Awareness and Prevention Month here in Southampton, and we had an anti-bullying summit yesterday at Hampton Bays Middle School. I wanna thank them for hosting us, it was really a great turnout, we had about forty-five to fifty kids from eight different schools that were represented and they, they left some final thoughts at the end, which really struck me. It was, it was very, it had a great positive impact on them and it was really very, very nice to see, so that was yesterday, so thank you. And I wanna thank Nancy Lynett and Alicia from the Youth Bureau who were very instrumental in saying that this came off right.
Now, Frank is reminding me that the Ponquag Beach Pavilion groundbreaking is scheduled for, for Tuesday, the thirtieth of October, day before Halloween at one PM. And that's a, a major capital project to add additional decking and to reside the Ponquag Pavilion and get it ready for next season. So again, it's next Tuesday, October thirtieth at one PM. Julie, do you have something to?
Not this week.
John, anything else?
No.
All right, so what I'd like to do is make a motion to end our work session and go into executive session, partly for, to discuss the Suffolk County Water Authority draft proposal contract and also for confidential legal advice and personnel items as well. So I'll make a motion to end our work session, go to executive session on those items, seconded by Ms. Bouvier, are you all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we adjourn for all other.